The next item is item A, IKEA Warehouse. We'll hear from staff. The applicant will make a presentation. We'll then open the public hearing and then we'll bring it back to commission.
Let me just reiterate that there are couches and closed-circuit TV downstairs. If you want to go down there and have a place to sit rather than stand up here, you can watch what's going on down there. If you've submitted a speaker's card and I call your name and you're down there, you can just come on up when you hear your name called.
Yeah, we have done speaker cards tonight, first time for me as well. But we thought it'd be easier to keep it ruly, I suppose. We're gonna try and stick with the three minutes. Everyone, please try to be concise with your comments and try not to repeat items that come over and over again. We've gotten many, many, many emails, many, many phone calls and met with just about everybody in this room at some point, so thank you, Maru.
Good evening, commission. I'm Miro Desai, the senior planner and a project planner for this project. So this is a use permit and design review permit in front of you to establish an off-site warehouse by IKEA to allow customer pickup at 5,000 Hollis Street. As you may recall that on June Planning Commission meeting, this proposal came to you in form of a study session. So this is the Level 3 building, the existing site plan. As you can see, there is parking at both the north end and the south end. This is gonna, it's about 120,000 square foot building and about 50 percent of the building is currently vacant. And the parking, the total parking onsite is about 99 spaces. This is the proposed site plan. So what you can see is the Level 3 will stay here and the rest of the building is going to be occupied by IKEA Warehouse. It's a little less than 50 percent that they're going to occupy. And there is going to also occur a reconfiguration of parking areas to accommodate loading docks as well as widened driveway. So the 99 parking spaces are going to be reduced to 57 parking spaces. These are the two new docks that are being proposed. What has changed from the study session is that now we also have customer large vehicle customer pickup on this side. All the small, small, small vehicle customer pickup will continue to occur on the north end of the parking lot. And this has been reconfigured and the existing plaza has been reconfigured so that it occupies the corner of the building. Another addition from the study session is that they are now proposing an eight-foot sound wall that you can see kind of in the yellow, yellow here. These are some of the elevations. The ones on the top are existing and the ones at the bottom are proposed. This is the 53rd Street elevation. There's gonna be a new entry and the signage, and I'll, you'll see it a little bit more in detail further down, has been reduced. The color is, if you may recall, they were, in the earlier proposal, they were going to be coloring the entire of this space, the IKEA blue and yellow, but that has been reduced to just center at the new entry. They're also proposing a new monument sign only. They have removed the flags and other signage. This is the Hollis Street elevation. Not much is happening except for the canopy that, and the monument sign on this end. So this is the signage. They are proposing essentially a monument, a directional monument sign. It's about 17 feet tall and as well as the wall, signage on the wall. These are the renderings as seen from the corner of 53rd and Hollis Street. This is on Hollis Street looking, going north. And this is the rendering on the 53rd Street looking west. So the operational characteristic is that it's primarily to store merchandise and allow customer to pick up large art, item merchandise like beds and refrigerators. The customer pickup will occur every day between 10:00 AM in the morning till 9:00 PM, essentially to coincide with the store hours. There is, there is no showroom at the site, no self-serve area and no sale of food. There'll be one truck daily to the warehouse from IKEA's central terminal and from the warehouse to the store. And this will occur between 7:00 AM and 9:30 AM. And I'll talk a little bit more about this later on. On average, 71 customer pickups on weekdays are expected and 75 on each weekend day. I'd just like to point out there's an error in the staff report which is actually not customer pickups but the total trips on Hollis. So this is the actual data and this is what was used in the traffic report as well. In terms of conformity to general plan and interim zoning regulations, the land use of the site falls in the OT or the Office Technology District, primary to, and the use which is to store merchandise and to allow customer pickup of large item merchandise is, would be seen as a warehousing use. The warehousing use are conditionally permitted in the OT zone only if they are secondary to the other permitted or conditionally permitted users. Staff believes that this finding can be made because the building is primarily occupied by Level 3 which owns it and renovated it and which occupies a little more than half the building. This makes Level 3 the primary use of the property and IKEA a secondary use. In terms of height and floor area ratio, the site falls in the 30 to 55 foot height district and 1.2 to 1.6 FAR district. The existing building conforms to these standards and the current proposal involves no change in the height or the floor area. In terms of parking, the Level 3 operations do not neatly fit, fall into any of our parking categories. And for such uses, the zoning code allows the commission to determine the parking ratio. We asked a traffic consultant, a traffic and parking consultant, to look into whether the parking that has been provided for, that has been provided for the building is sufficient or not. The report concludes that the 57 spaces that are being proposed can accommodate more than five times the level of activity that is expected at the site. The traffic report, a copy of which is attached to your staff report, I'm gonna briefly summarize that. We do have our traffic consultant here if you have further questions for him. The report concludes that the street system can accommodate the level of traffic that is projected with minimal impact. If you kind of look at the PMP trips during week, weekdays and the weekend peak trips, for the IKEA warehouse, it's 14 and 18 which is, for the, for the PMP hours, it's considerably less than the other possible uses in the zoning district. The office is at 85, R&amp;D is a little lower at 61, and a general warehouse would be 56. As far as the weekend peak trips are concerned, IKEA warehouse is comparable to the other possible uses except for an industrial warehouse use. The traffic report also talks about intersection analysis of 53rd Hollis and 40th and Hollis. The level of service at both intersections remain the same, so that the 53rd and Hollis intersection, the level of service is currently A. And after, with this project, it continues to remain at A. The 40th and Hollis intersection, the level of service is at LOS C and it will continue to stay that after the project is included in the calculations. The report also analyzed the above intersections with up to five times the additional traffic projected, projected for the IKEA warehouse and found no differences in LOS. The report has a few recommendations. This includes that the directions, clear directions be given to customers, not only to the warehouse, as well as how to get out of the warehouse and on their way, so directions to the major freeways. They also recommend bulbouts on 53rd Street to highlight that it is not an auto-dominated street. There's also an, they also recommend installation of bicycle blueout signage and/or pavement markings on 53rd Street. These recommendations have been included as conditions of approval in the staff report. In addition to the traffic recommendations being conditions of approval, I'm gonna highlight a few conditions which are peculiar to this project. One is that we are including that a administrative review take place after six months and then another one, one year after the facility gets into the operation. This would allow staff and if needed, Planning Commission, to review if any issues have come up and reexamine if any modifications to the conditions of approvals are warranted or not. Second condition of approval is that we are requiring the applicant to designate a community liaison officer to address any complaints or concerns that may come up. We're also restricting the truck delivery timings to 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM on weekdays and 8:00 to 5:00 on weekends. There's also no right signs at the exit to 53rd Street so that all the customers who come in, they do not go onto the 53rd Street towards San Pablo which is a lot more, which is residential area. We are also requiring the applicant to install video camera systems at the traffic light in order to detect the vehicular and bicycle movements on that intersection. We are also requiring that IKEA grant city construction easement at the IKEA store during the construction of the South Bayfront Bridge and as well as the IKEA give construction easement when the Bay Trail is under construction. In addition, we are requiring that IKEA provide a permanent bicycle pedestrian trail easement over the IKEA property, that's the store property, for the Bay Trail. This concludes my presentation. We are recommending approval of the use permit and design review subject to conditions of approval. Before I ask you if you have questions for me, I want to point out to us a few documents that are on your desk and there are also copies over there. Regarding the easements, the condition regarding the easements, we have revised a little bit of the language in order to be more precise. You should find that on your dais. It kind of gives it more details, kind of specifies the time and the way it would be, the way it would work out. So that is on your dais and this is our recommendation. This is our new revised condition regarding the easement. I would also like to mention that we have received a number of emails. There are 13 emails. We did not include it in your packet because all these emails were given, also directed to you in order to save paper, but there are about 13. 12 are, do not support this project and there is one in support of the project. IKEA also prepared a noise report which we emailed to you and which is a copy, a hard copy is at, on your dais. Another letter came in from Andrew Getz and that was also forwarded along with the noise report and you have a hard copy on your dais.
Maru, can I have one of these? There's not one here for me. That's an extra one?
Yeah.
Oh, there's an extra one right here. Before we ask questions, there's a lot of public improvements here and so maybe we can hear from Maurice because I see he's here just to talk about a few of the major conditions in regards to those, those improvements, those infrastructure improvements, especially the bulbouts and the cameras. Is anybody okay with that? Do you hear Maurice?
I'd also like to hear about the easements for the bike paths.
Okay. Maurice, would you mind?
Commissioner Flores, thanks for asking me to speak with you. So in particular, the video detection, sounds like you're interested in that. We actually have video detection in one of the legs at that intersection and it works much better for the bikes, to detect the bikes when they're approaching. And so we've been slowly trying to change out our signal systems to have those. So that was one of the reasons why we've asked to include that as part of the conditions.
And what, what is that exactly that?
Essentially, there are video cameras that are on the mast arms of the signals and they detect the vehicles so that when they're present, it'll activate the signal.
I see.
And so it works both, both for vehicles and for bikes. And it's been shown that it works much better for bikes than the standard inductive loops that we have typically at our.
And there's one there now pointing in?
There's one there now pointing towards the west because we had all this fancy granite at the intersection and the loops failed some years ago and we had Chiron at the time replace it with a video system.
And we're asking for how much of an improvement on the camera system?
I don't have the exact dollar amount for it.
Not the dollar amount?
It would be an additional three cameras.
Three cameras?
Correct.
So pointing in every direction?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. The bulbouts, we're trying to improve pedestrian safety in that area and so although the, we're having the level of service A and we're not changing it for the vehicles, we still think it's warranted to make sure that it's obvious that it's gonna be safe for pedestrians there and it's pedestrian zone. So the, the north-south leg on the east side, we wanna be able to shorten that crossing distance. So we are, we're looking at bulging out both the north and south side of 53rd Street on, on that project frontage. If you understand what I'm saying.
Does that, does that create turn, turning lanes into IKEA and/or just the start of a bike lane, I guess?
It would, wouldn't stick out further than in a parked car if you, if, I'm not thinking it would go much beyond that. I think we could allow about six feet is what we were looking at on each side. So you essentially reduce it about 12 feet or one driving lane, crossing distance.
Okay. And can you talk about the easement that Gail mentioned? Do you have a specific question?
Sure. There is three different easements we're looking at, I believe it was.
Charlie, can you pull the map up so you can point this out?
Do you have a map of the easements? I thought there was one.
Okay. This right here is a Caltrans drawing of the, the, in the area of the current IKEA and the ramp going up over the 40th Street Bridge. You hear me? Okay. So this right here represents, this shaded area represents Caltrans's concept at this point for the Bay Trail that's gonna head to the, the Bay Bridge. There's gonna be a spur trail that goes out to the Bay Bridge. And at this time, the way they've, the way they're considering to build it, it would be a bike path along Shellmount Street. And then if you're heading south on Shellmount and you wanna go to the Bay Bridge, you'd come around the bridge embankment and this would, this would, this would get you to head towards the Bay Bridge. And on the way back, if you want to head towards up Shellmount, you could come in underneath the Bay, underneath the 40th Street Bridge and around, along the side of the IKEA parking lot and out towards Shellmount Street.
So all that's at ground level?
All that's in ground level. The majority of it is on either Caltrans right-of-way or on City right-of-way underneath the 40th Street Bridge. But there's a little piece in here, right about here, and right now they're actually talking about extending it further all the way to the intersection. So there's a piece in there that needs to be along IKEA frontage. And Caltrans is going to be working with IKEA in the near future to try to acquire that property, but it'd be a much, and, and they're getting very close to being able to proceed on this project except for this not having the right-of-way here. So this would help that project along considerably if we could get that right-of-way. In order to build, and so that would be a permanent easement that we would be looking for. In order to build this project, we would need to have a temporary construction easement to take over this area for a certain number of time. I believe we're looking at like 10 weeks or so to build it as a temporary construction easement. So those are the two Caltrans easements that we're looking for. There's another easement that we're looking for, for our own city project which, which is the South Bayfront Bicycle and Pedestrian Bridge. As you know, we're working to complete that project as we speak and one of the outstanding things is all the easements that we need on both the east and the west side. We're working with Navartis. We're working with the railroad and Madison Marquette. And access for that project is very difficult. And so what we're hoping to be able to do is to be able to work with IKEA to gain access to the railroad property. And what we're asking for is permission to drive our trucks and equipment in through their site to get to the railroad property. We're kinda landlocked if we, if we're not able to get into the site from the north because you can't get there through the Madison Marquette property. So essentially, we'd be driving through their parking lanes until you get to the backside on the, it goes around the project, around the garage and around the backside of IKEA until you get pretty close to where the South Bayfront, excuse me, where the, the Bay Street site is. We'd open up, open up the gate or the fence that's next to the railroad so that we can get trucks in and out. And we're looking for about an 18-month construction period on our bridge project, so we're hoping to be able to work out an arrangement with IKEA to do that for about 18 months.
Okay. This is an agenda item as a study session later if anybody'd like to stick around at midnight.
Actually, that's the other bridge.
Oh, sorry.
That's the one over the freeway.
We need easements for that one, too. Any commissioner questions for Maurice or for Maru?
Have there been agreements from IKEA to make these easements available for the construction?
We actually hadn't started talking with IKEA until this project came along. So this is the first that we've started.
But as it stands now, the approval of the warehouse would require them to be open on this?
Correct.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah. Is, is the landscape architect for present or?
Yes, she is and she's gonna, she can talk more about the landscaping.
Okay, great. And then just one more time, I, you said there was a change to the figures that were in the staff report from, is it from 190 customer pickups on the second page of the staff report?
Yes. The 190 figure is total, total trips. The customer pickups is, remain 71, so that's an error. It says that's 190 customer.
You're speaking to the mic, Maru.
Customer pickup, but it's actually 71 during weekend, weekdays and 75 during weekends. So that is incorrect.
So the, the 71 would be for the whole period that it's open the whole day? It's not hourly trips?
That is correct.
Okay.
I had a question for staff. John, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. I had a question for staff. The data that you're using, that was supplied by IKEA, what are the busiest times of the
The traffic report also talks about special events, the sales that they have. And there are three times during the year that they have these big sales. And that, so we have accounted for that as well. If you look at the traffic report on page. Page six of the traffic report, the paragraph above the table.
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah.
But my concern is that the data has been generated in a period in June when I think it's the slowest time in the store's activity. I'm just trying to determine if that's a real accurate indication of the activity that's gonna be here. I know prior to school starting or probably in the December months, it's gonna be really active. And I'd much rather use the worst-case scenario than the least active scenario in basing the, the complexity of this problem that I see here. The fact that I think they're underestimated.
Right.
I think the numbers are totally underestimated if you're relying on June data. That's what I'm asking.
Right. We also, like I mentioned, we are looking at the worst-case scenario as well and sale events are their most heaviest traffic. And we've incorporated that and that also does not change the data. Of course, it's a lot more during those three periods, three times a year. But it is not my understanding that June is the lowest. Perhaps IKEA, somebody from IKEA can clarify that.
But also, I'd just like to point out that on that same page of the traffic report that Miro mentioned, page six.
Yeah.
That table, it uses these figures that came from IKEA which are, you know, actual recent figures. But it also calculates the level of service at the intersections with twice as much traffic as that, three times as much traffic as that, four times as much traffic as that and five times as much traffic as that. That's on page eight, I'm sorry.
Right, I see that. Now, does this include internet sales as well? So could somebody use a computer and order something and have to go here and pick it up?
We have a condition of approval that we're recommending that would prohibit that.
How do, how do you control that? That's where the, that's where things are going. That's why I'm, I'm asking because I think the level of activity needs to take into consideration internet sales as well and also returns. I don't know if this will be a hub for returns for large items, but has that been factored into the equation?
I would say those are questions for IKEA.
Okay, I can hold those for them.
The applicant could probably answer that better.
Okay.
I do have one question along the lines on the traffic report. The traffic counts that were done says it was done in May and June. Was that done while the school was in session?
Maybe we should hear from our traffic consultant. This is Rob Reese from Farr and Pierce.
Rob Reese with Farr and Pierce and we prepared the traffic study based on the customer data that IKEA had given us. The traffic counts were conducted while schools were in session midweek, Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday, and the weather was fair on those days.
So maybe this question is still for you.
Wait, wait, yeah. I was gonna ask, do you have further questions for Rob?
Yeah. I do have a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in planning and I don't understand Table 3 that well. So maybe you can talk a little bit about project times two squared and so forth when in concern, when we're talking about the intersections, 53rd and Hollis obviously being the, the most important for the viewing public, too. Thank you.
So the process that we undertook for the analysis is that we first collected data on the street at Hollis and 53rd. We'll focus on that intersection, but it also applies to Hollis and 40th. Collected vehicle, pedestrian and bicycle data during the, during the PM peak periods and the Saturday afternoon peak period. We figured out what the highest hour was when the traffic levels were greatest. And then we analyzed that and that's what you see up there, the results saying that 53rd and Hollis operates at a level of service A for the automobile and, and actually for the bicyclists who has to follow the rules of the California Vehicle Code. We then took the project as IKEA provided it to us. So they said they have 71, they expect 71 customers on a weekday, 75 customers on the weekend. We've looked at how much of that traffic would occur during the peak hour that we had identified. And based on that, we assigned that number of trips to the site. And what it, what we determined is that on a Saturday, we'll focus just on Saturday, we would have nine customers in one hour coming from IKEA to pick up something at this site. And so that translates into nine trips in, assuming that each person stays about 15 minutes, they would all leave within the same hour, so that would be nine trips out. We added that to the existing traffic counts and that's the second set of numbers that says existing plus project. And we analyzed it and came up with the levels of service that you see there. We then said, well, what happens if instead of nine people coming, we have 18 people coming in one hour? We then followed the same methodology, assigned the traffic, analyzed it, came up with the result. We then said, well, what would happen if we had three times the number of people? So instead of nine, we had 27 people in one hour. Did the same analysis and then we did it for five times and did that analysis. We then said, well, what if this use was a general office use as typically found in Emeryville? And we presented that analysis as well. And that's the last column on the table.
And that was just based on square footage compared to an Emeryville, another Emeryville office?
Correct. Approximately 60,000 square feet of general office use.
And the, the figures for the 53rd Street at the driveway, that's for someone exiting the driveway to get out and how long they'd have to wait before they could pull in. Did you look at stacking between there and the intersection?
Yeah, the stacking we found would be only one to two cars typically during a cycle length. The traffic signal cycles through about once every minute. So that means that if I just missed the light, let's say that I turned from IKEA onto 53rd and the light turns red, I would have to wait one minute approximately before I could go. And so that means that somebody can go, this, it cycles through every 60 seconds. And if you think about having nine customers coming in an hour, that's a far greater number as far as, it's a customer every few minutes.
Will the bulbouts change that queuing at all?
The bulbouts will change the queuing because right now what you have at 53rd Street is the ability for somebody to be waiting to make a left turn while. for somebody to be waiting to make a left turn while the light is red, and a car could go around and make the right turn on the red signal. And so you would have an increase in queuing. It still would not be more than around two cars or so. What the city's purpose, I think, is like Maurice had said with the bulbouts, you don't have then a driver coming up to the intersection thinking, I'm gonna try to get out on this red light and turning right into a pedestrian. And so that's, that's the benefit of squeezing it down so that only one car can get through at a time. But the dis-benefit is that then people that currently use the intersection might, instead of being one to two cars, it'll maybe be two or so cars.
So, it's your opinion, and it's written in here, that an office use would, it would create more traffic patterns, more trips in and out
On a weekday.
than five times, a typical office use would create more than five times the projected project traffic?
On, on the weekday?
On the weekday.
That is true. On a weekend?
Not so much.
On the weekend, the office use would generate about the same amount of traffic as our existing plus project scenario.
Okay.
And that is about nine cars in and nine cars out in the week.
The only fallacy with that analogy is that if you had a 60,000 square foot office tenant, and the required parking is four per thousand, you're talking about 240 parking stalls, which we clearly don't have on-site. So you couldn't accommodate a 60,000 square foot office tenant and comply with zoning requirements for parking. I'm assuming four per thousand, which is the norm.
It's actually three per thousand, and we take 80%, of the area.
Right, you subtract 20.
So it's 2.4 per thousand.
But you're still, you're still exceeding what they have capacity for on-site. So you really can't make that analogy, because you can't accommodate an office user of 60,000 square feet on this site without building a parking structure.
We're finding another way. Any more questions for the traffic engineer? Seeing none. Any more questions for staff? Seeing none. We are going to hear from the applicant now.
Good evening. My name is Doug Greenholtz, and I am real estate manager with IKEA. And we have our team of consultants here. So when we get through with the presentation, if there are questions, hopefully we should be able to answer them with everybody that we have here, including our landscape architect, our broker, architects, noise consultants, and also here are the representatives of Level Three who own the building. I have a lot to go through, and I will do my best to keep it to 20 minutes. And of course, we'll be available for questions afterwards. In case I forget to address the questions that Commissioner Steinberg just had, I want to make sure and answer them now, and hopefully this won't count against my 20 minutes. In terms of returns, no, they will not occur at this facility. All of that will occur at the store. The only activity that will occur here for customers is pickup. In terms of internet sales, internet sales for IKEA are minimal nationwide. And we're just not set up for it. Our product isn't set up for it, and it represents a very, very small component of our business. One of the conditions is that internet sales not be allowed to go through this facility. In talking with some of our internal folks about where things may be going, we would like to carve that out as a potential for the future. Again, with internet sales representing a very, very small portion of our business. So with that, I'd like to get going on, and I'll answer the questions with regard to traffic in a moment. This is an outline of what I'd like to go through, and some of this you've seen before, but I want to make sure that I put everything into context. So we'll talk about the project status, the need for the warehouse, possible solutions, where we are with design and the revisions that we've made, some of the potential impacts and mitigations. There are some issues still with conditions of approval, and finally, there are some considerations I'd like to point out to you in your deliberations and decision. We've been at this for quite a while. This need was identified nine to 10 months ago, and we took the time to develop the criteria, do a thorough search. We found a property, Level Three building, 5,000 Hollis. We've been in discussions with them for quite some time. We were before the Planning Commission for a study session in June. We had a neighborhood meeting in July. We submitted for redesign a few weeks ago, and here we are tonight. We're, we've been working very hard on this. We've been working on the construction drawings, and we've actually submitted those for building permit to run those processes in parallel. We opened about 10 years ago, and the store's been a big success by any measure. But it's too small for what we need to do today. The limitation in size is limiting our sales essentially. And we have a mandate to ensure that the products that we offer in the store are available for our customers that same day. And we have run into issues where we are out of stock. And so in order to accommodate that, as well as some other operational issues, we need to expand our warehouse capacity in order to support the sales that we have today, but also to allow our sales to grow. So there is a business need for additional warehouse capacity. Ideally, we would just expand the building. We can't, physically, it's not possible. There is no room to do so. Our second choice would be to build a warehouse on-site. There's no room to do that either. If we're not allowed, if we can't do this project and expand our warehouse capacity, the result would be that we would have to reduce what we offer in the store, which would have a negative impact on sales. So the remaining option is the one that is pending before you, which is an external warehouse that would also serve as a furniture pickup facility for larger bulky items. Primarily, this is a warehouse. We would store goods here and bring them to the store as needed in order to restock the store warehouse. It would also serve as customer pickup, again, for large bulky items or low-volume items that take up space in the store that just don't turn over that often. There'll be no product sales out of this building. We won't sell anything out of this building. No food, no services. Come pick up your stuff, load it in your car, and you're on your way. And as Traffic Consultant suggested, five to 15 minutes is what would be required per customer in the parking lot in order to accomplish that. In order to meet our needs, the facility needs to be near the store. If you can imagine buying a sofa, for example, or a large item, you've been through the store, you've shopped, you've paid for it, you want to take it home, that's our concept, then you have to go drive to another facility to pick it up. It's our goal to minimize those numbers of trips as much as possible, to inconvenience our customers as little as possible. And so it needs to be close and easy to find for our customers. Also needs to be a certain size to accommodate the warehouse need. And ideally, we would separate car and, customer and truck traffic for safety reasons. We did do a thorough search. We looked at a number of properties within a radius, again, to try to minimize the distance our customers would have to travel. And we looked at several properties within a mile and a half to two-mile radius, but none of these other properties worked. Either the column spacing didn't work, the property worked for trucks but not for customers, or they worked for customers and not for trucks. They were too small, or there was no off-street parking. Some of the properties, the landlords or owners were not willing to subdivide, or they were not willing to lease the property. So this is the only property really that works for us for this solution in terms of capacity, in terms of operations, and in terms of proximity. What would happen in the store is we would take what we call our full-serve handout. So this is warehouse area where we have goods that are bulky or low-volume. And a customer today, they purchase that item, they wait for 10 minutes, it's brought out to them, and then they load it in their car. It's that function in addition to the warehouse that we would move over to this new facility. What that does is it vacates about 20,000 square feet within the store that could be reused or would be reused as what we call self-serve warehouse. And that's sales area where customers pull the goods off the warehouse shelves themselves. And what that does is it increases by 33% that area of the store. So then more goods are available to the customer to pull off the shelves themselves. And it would require fewer full-serve handouts, which is the function that would be moved over to the new facility. This is a 120,000 square foot warehouse, building that's been occupied and is owned by Level Three Communications. They're an international telecommunications company. They occupy just over 60,000 square feet. And they would have 12 parking spaces, which is more than enough for what they need. We would take the rest of that, just under 60,000 square feet, and would have ample parking for our coworkers, customers, whether they have regular-sized vehicles or oversized vehicles, which would be, and they would be directed to the back of the facility. So what happens on-site? Who comes here? There is one truck delivery per day. This is a 53-foot truck. There are loading dock spaces to accommodate that. There are some days where there won't be any truck deliveries, but we are looking at and would like approved, one truck per day. There are also what I'll call shuttle trucks that move goods back and forth between this facility and the store. There's home delivery, which comes and pulls goods out of this facility, brings it over to the store, so those deliveries could be consolidated there and then in turn delivered to the customer. And there would also be pickup for recyclables and trash. We would have coworkers that would come here. They would park in the back of the facility on the south side. And then, of course, we have customer pickup. And this goes back to Commissioner Steinberg's question as to where these numbers came from. We did an analysis from, in two weeks in June. And June, by the way, and I did this calculation based on a question we got, the period that we looked at, June 1st to June 14th, is, represents 99% of our average sales during a similar period over the year. So it's very representative, that period is very representative of our average sales. As Maru mentioned, we also looked at a peak, and our peak period is really in August, when we deliver our catalogs. We call it K-drop, catalog drop. And we were able to measure what our customer trips would have been to this off-site facility if it had existed during that timeframe during our peak period on a Saturday, Sunday. And those trips, we estimated at about 130. There was one day that was 122, I think, and the other that was about 134. So those numbers fall well within the analysis that the Traffic Consultant did, looking at two, three, four, and five times these estimated numbers. Again, this is very convenient for our customers. They turn left out of the store onto Shell Mound, which becomes 40th, left on Hollis, and they can find their way to the facility quite easily. Through the study session with the commission, one-on-one discussions, through the meeting with the neighborhood and the, and B-PAC, there were several issues raised. The trade dress or the amount of blue and yellow on the building, the amount of signage, traffic, noise, onsite circulation, and whether it really worked the way the parking lot had been configured for customers. Was there sufficient landscaping, and what happens with the plaza? There were questions about safety and security, and a question about whether this proposal really supports the guiding principles of the general plan. Overall, our impression from this body last time we were here was that the use, there were no objections to the use of this facility. Again, this is how it lays out. And I do want to highlight just for a moment the changes, because I want to, I want to be clear about how we have listened to and reacted to the comments that we got from the various entities I mentioned earlier. So we have reconfigured the north parking lot. We've brought those spaces against the building with the sidewalk there so that customers won't have to walk across the driveline to get to their car and to load it. We have reactivated the plaza, and I'll show that in a little bit more detail in a few minutes. There is a significant amount of landscaping, including planner boxes on 53rd Street, supporting the general plan concept of this being a green street. We have been asked to add right, no right-turn signs at the exit of the parking lot. There would actually be two signs, one at the exit on our property, one across the street in the right-of-way, and then a third one actually painted on the ground. So it's very clear that customers are not to turn right towards the neighborhood, but to turn left and go back out towards Hollis, and then a right-hand turn to Powell. We've also been asked to add bicycle boulevard signs indicating this is a bicycle boulevard. There would be a vertical sign in the sidewalk, and also a painted side, a painted sign on the pavement. We've added a sound wall for the trucks, eight feet high, 75 feet long, which would completely cover the trucks as they're in the pit in the, in the truck dock area. We did relocate the oversized vehicle, let's call them U-Hauls for purposes of this discussion, to the south side of the, of the building. That keeps those oversized vehicles out of the parking lot in front, which would be for normal-sized vehicles. We were also asked if it would be possible to move all vehicle operations, so including customer pickup, to the south side of the building. We've looked at it, and we looked at it previously, and it's just not possible. We can't, there isn't enough physical room, either on the outside of the building or inside the building, to move everything to the south side of the building. So we're left with having to have customer pickup on the north side. We also moved the recycle bins inside the building. And we were, there were some concerns about noise from rooftop units, HVAC. We are going to be adding only one HVAC unit, which will condition the customer space, which is about 2,000 square feet. All of the other units will be inside the building under the roof. This is a comparison of the original design up top and down below, the revisions. They, I think they speak for themselves in terms of the response that we have to the concerns. Mostly gray, and there is just a blue and yellow at the entryway to indicate to customers where to go. This is the rendering from before and after. There's been elimination of the flags, as well as all of the parking lot signage that was a point of discussion earlier. But we did add a monument sign, which is, which will serve as wayfinding for customers as they come north on Hollis. Once they see the sign that says IKEA Warehouse Pickup, they'll know where to turn, turn right on 53rd Street, and then into the parking lot. This is the landscaping, and I'll touch on this briefly. Again, if there are questions about landscaping, our landscape architect would answer them. But we reactivated the plaza. There are bike racks, benches, picnic tables, by the way, done with recycled materials. There's a rock garden, shade trees, pervious pavers, and we've also added ADA access. Another thing I'd like to point out is that we're meeting all the C3 requirements to treat onsite stormwater. So that has all been done both on the north and south side of the property. The plantings are done with low-water plantings, and we've intensified the screening on the east side of the, both parking lots and the building in order to add screening along Spur Alley. The other thing you'll notice, I don't know if this, there we go. Can you see that pointer? We, the sound wall runs along here, along the truck docks, the 75-foot sound wall. We've also added a 10-foot landscape buffer that's fairly intense with landscape in order to hide that wall. So that wall is a concrete wall, but over time, the landscaping will completely obscure that. Traffic, you heard from the Traffic Consultant, but a few things I'd like to point out is that, as he mentioned, the intersections and the infrastructure, even with five times the traffic that we project, still continue to operate at the levels that they operate today. Same with parking, even at 53rd Street. Even at five times our estimates, the parking is sufficient to accommodate our customers and our truck movements. And the other thing is that this use represents significantly less volumes than would be present with other by-right uses. 50 to 70% less traffic with our use as opposed to office use. We commissioned an acoustical study in response to the questions about noise. And again, our acoustical consultant can answer questions, because while I have an undergrad and graduate degree, it is not in acoustics or engineering. What we did is, we had placed a, a sound monitoring device in the truck dock area of our existing store. And somehow, it was designed to pick up truck noises and filter out other ambient noises. So the idea here was to isolate the noise that's generated by trucks. Two other monitoring devices were placed, one along 53rd Street, and the other on the south end of the building. So the south end of the building is to the left, 53rd Street to the right. Then, through the magic of Pixar, or Disney, the acoustical engineer was able to take the ambient readings that were taken here, and overlay the readings that were taken at the store with the truck movements, and then projected what the noise level would be at the point of the blue dot, approximately. So this is the edge of the neighborhood. What's the ambient noise? What's the truck noise that would be added to it? And what's the result? So the maximum sound levels of truck activity is similar to the ambient noise that already exists at that point and in the area. And again, this was analyzed as if you were standing at that point, the blue, where the blue dot is. But there are mitigations with regard to sound. And some of these mitigations came from our own initiative, some from the recommendations by the acoustical engineer, and some as conditions of approval. So there are truck delivery limitations. Initially, we talked about limiting those to only after 7:00 or 8:00, weekdays and weekends, respectively. There's a requirement that we also limit truck deliveries in the evening, no later than 6:00 on weekdays, or 5:00 on weekends. As I mentioned, there would only be one additional rooftop unit. All the others would be inside the space. The sound wall at the truck dock, we moved oversized vehicles. And I think there was a concern about those having beepers. So those were moved furthest away from the, from the residential community. We increased the landscaping. We would, either ourselves, if it's a truck that we own, or instruct our third-party vendors to disable the enunciators as long as life safety isn't jeopardized. So most of the big trucks, the 53-foot delivery trucks, don't have enunciators on them. Some of the smaller trucks, the 20-foot trucks, do. The one that we would operate, we would disable as long as there's not life safety jeopardized. And we would ask our vendors, who, basically, the, the home delivery folks, also to disable those enunciators as long as life safety wasn't an issue. We would also use inflatable dock shelters. What this does is it creates a seal between the building and the truck. And it goes around the truck on the, on the three sides, not the bottom, obviously, because you have movement in and out. But that would also limit the noise that would come from the truck. We would instruct forklift drivers to use slow speed, to minimize noise as well. Instruct our truck drivers to not idle while they're sitting there. We don't have trash compactors on-site, and again, we move the recycle bins inside the building. There's some question about safety and security. Level 3 has their own procedures and operations with regard to safety and security. In addition to that, we would have staff on-site before the facility opens, after it closes. We would also have 24-hour monitoring. And we have a whole loss prevention team, which is our security group, at the store that would be available 24/7 to respond if there was an issue. So we looked at the guiding principles of the general plan, and identified principles that we think we relate to. And without going through these in detail, if you look at the signage of the bicycle boulevard, our cooperation with the city with regard to the bike bridges and bike paths, the enhanced landscaping on 53rd Street in support of a green street, and reactivation of a plaza that's really a place where pedestrians and our customers can gather. If we look at diversity of transportation, we were and continue to be very involved in Emery Go-Round. We participate in those meetings, and of course, we support through our taxes. We've also been asked to provide public transportation information through either a kiosk or a display unit, which we will do. We have home delivery available, and there are other initiatives also that support alternative transportation. In terms of sustainability, we're a very active company when it comes to this, this issue. And we have pages and pages of examples. This operation would be no different. And in terms of looking at the past, this is a reuse of an existing facility that was originally built as a warehouse, and that's how we propose to use it. In terms of conditions of approval, there are some issues. There were 23 pages of conditions of approval. And we are okay with all of them, except for a few. And there are some issues that we have not yet been able to resolve, and I'd like to just go through those, so that can be part of a discussion as well. First one is critical to us. And what this is asking us to do is to allow for administrative review down the road, where additional conditions could be required of the, of the project. And we have looked very carefully at the numbers, and we think that now is the time to discuss conditions. Again, 23 pages' worth. We are agreeing to all the conditions, except for these few. The, essentially, what we would be asked to do is to make a sizable investment in improving this property, but without knowing where the end is. We don't know what additional conditions could be assessed down the road. And we need to be able to quantify what the costs are today. We've been very candid and open book with staff and the community about what this operation is. And we feel that the conditions can be assessed today. We've been very cooperative with the city. We have a very good relationship. We've worked well with the city in the past when there are problems or issues. We are a, I think, an upstanding member of the community, and we don't see that changing in the future. And so if there are issues that come up, of course, we would work with the city. But we don't see that an open-ended ability to apply additional conditions is appropriate. The second item is with regard to the bulb-outs. By putting in the bulb-outs, essentially, a westbound lane would be eliminated. We don't feel that this is beneficial to traffic flow. We're concerned about the backup that would be caused from that, that it could cause gridlock at the entrance and exit of our parking lot. So as those cars back up because of one less lane, as they back up, there's not an ability to make the left-hand turn out of our parking lot. Of course, they're not allowed to turn right, because we've restricted that movement, so that's not an alternative. They can only turn left, and if that intersection backs up, customers wouldn't be able to exit the parking lot. We also feel that it's going to make that right-hand turn northbound Hollis onto eastbound 53rd more difficult. As you have the bulb-out sticking out, it makes that turn movement more difficult. On the more practical side, we don't know that it's even physically possible to create this bulb-out. Make these improvements with the amount of utilities that are underground there. So even if we were willing to do it, thought it was a good idea and supported it, we're not sure that it could physically be accomplished. Also, this is a leased facility. This is not a ground-up. This is, we're making improvements, basically tenant improvements to an existing facility. This kind of public improvement in a right-of-way is, we feel, beyond what should be required for this kind of improvement. The third issue is the rain garden. We have not had a lot of clarity from the city on what this is supposed to be, other than treating the, the stormwater in the street. And we are treating the stormwater, per the C3 requirements that I mentioned earlier, on-site. So we're handling all of that. In addition, we're, we're adding a significant amount of landscaping to 53rd Street. And we don't feel that the rain garden, as loosely as it's defined, should be a requirement of this project. And again, there is the issue there of, we don't think it can physically be accomplished because of the amount of utilities and where they're located in the street. The fourth issue is the bicycle monitoring cameras. We are doing a lot in terms of supporting bicycles in the city. And this is an undetermined amount, an undetermined expenditure. We're unclear as to how they might affect the traffic flow in the intersection. And again, we feel that this is above and beyond what should be required for this scope of project. And finally, we've been able to work through almost all of the easement issues. So the city has come to us and asked us for easements that Maurice described earlier. Two related to the Bay Trail, and one related to the South Bayfront crossing over the railroad We are absolutely willing to work with the city on all those issues. The one issue that we have is that the way the, the document is worded today is that the establishment of the easement through our property for access to get to the Bayfront Bridge behind the Madison Marquette property would be a condition to us receiving the building permit. And it's a timing issue. So we don't want to be in a position where the building permit is ready to go, but because of issues beyond our means, beyond our control, whether it's somebody who's out of town, the city attorney can't review it, or whatever, we don't want the building permit held up because of that. So that detail is something that we would like to have removed. So in your deliberations and decision-making, I'd like to point out a couple of things and ask you to consider. One is the level of responsiveness that we've had towards the community and towards this body for the redesign of our project. This project is reusing an existing facility that's been vacant for a number of years. Building was originally built as a warehouse. We're proposing to reuse it as a warehouse. And the impacts in terms of traffic are less than what would be by right if the, if the space were used for office. This allows our sales to grow. That has a direct correlation to revenues to the city in terms of sales taxes. And finally, there would be greater certainty for the city in terms of obtaining the needed easements from IKEA. We've always worked with the city. We have always acted in good faith with the city. And I'd just like to mention that we are already working with Caltrans on the Caltrans easement. We're working on a, an easement document now that would allow them to do test borings for environmental conditions along the right-of-way area and along our property. We're already expending our own resources to make that happen. We've done so without complaint or issue with the city. So that's just one indication that we are already working in good faith on those issues. That concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer questions or have anybody from our team answer questions.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant? Start down here, is that all right? Okay. Have you built any of these before?
They exist in some countries in Europe. They do not, they have not yet been implemented here in the US. And there were some of our team members that traveled to the Netherlands a few months ago to observe how they worked. And they work quite well. And in terms of the 15 minutes that was used by the traffic engineer to estimate the amount of time that a customer would be at the facility to load their, their vehicle, by observation, not statistically, but by observation, we found that time to be less than 15 minutes.
And your occupancy of the remainder of this building would prohibit L3 from ever expanding? Are they fixed and stable as far as what their needs are into the future?
Most of that question I would leave to Level 3, but I can speak to the objective part, which is, there still is space within the 60,000-square-feet that they don't occupy for their main function that would be available to them for expansion. In terms of what their plans are, I would have to leave that to them to respond.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on your objections to the condition. It's a two-way street. If we agreed not to have a settlement easement thing, how do we know we'll ever get it?
We've always worked in good faith with the city. We've already been working with Caltrans. In fact, we were working with Caltrans in discussions as long ago as a year and a half. So I think our track record stands for itself. We're already working now. What I'd like to say, though, is that the way that the document or this condition is written is it says that we will, both parties, well, actually, it's just a condition on us, that we would work in good faith in achieving and granting these easements. But again, we've already been working with Caltrans, and we have for quite some time.
I'm talking about the one on the railroad track, the access to the bay, the bridge.
We would work in good faith with the city on that as well. And again, the issue that I have-
Your issue is that you don't want the building permit held up by the completion of these easements.
Exactly.
You're saying that you'll, that IKEA is going to, in good faith, continue speaking with the city and Caltrans and work in good faith. They just don't want it held up by the building permit. But you're saying-
Well, how do we, how are we assured?
How do we get, how are we assured for that?
Does the staff have a suggestion?
Is there wording? Suppose Maurice can comment on that.
So we, we are very worried about the timing on getting those easements, because we're trying to bid the project, and we need to incorporate those, the easement language into our bid documents. So we're willing to work with IKEA to, to break up the permit. I mean, we want an incentive for them to, to, to move forward immediately, to agree on the terms of the easement. And if it does become a problem in, you know, they're ready to construct, and for some reason it hasn't been resolved, we can break apart the permit into pieces so that we can move it forward.
Give them a part of the permit?
Yeah, sure. We wouldn't, we wouldn't want to hold up the construction, but we can give a demo permit.
How about certificate of occupancy?
Well, certificate of occupancy, if that's not for another year, and we still haven't agreed to something, that would hold up the bidding of our-
Is that agreeable to IKEA? A partial release of a permit?
We, we do it all the time, where we give a foundation permit, demo permit.
Happened with Pixar, I know.
Yeah, we, we can work with that. We're just concerned about the timing issue. And, and just so you know, before we even realized that this was going to be a condition of approval, I had already been making inquiries of planning staff and Maurice to, to begin to work on this issue. And we've already started expending resources, again, before we realized this was going to be a condition to accommodate this request.
The other question I had, I'm sorry, I might have, what, what exactly is a rain
I'd like to leave that to staff.
Someone tell me what that is.
C3 requirements.
So a rain garden is a term we use for an area that we treat rainwater in a landscape area. We're putting them in the, in the triangle as part of our Triangle Traffic Coming project. We have them at the Doyle Hollis Park for a couple of the areas where the rain comes off the curb and into an area where it kind of settles out. And so what we're trying to do here, because we're getting pushed by the regional board to try creative ways to treat the stormwater, is what we're, we're trying to incorporate some of those treatments into this landscape area.
He said, the gentleman from IKEA said that they will handle the water on their site.
Right, but this rain garden would be handling the street stormwater.
Why is that their responsibility?
Well, when they're modifying their landscaping in front- Well, when they're modifying their landscaping in front of the site on public right-of-way, we're trying to incorporate this feature.
So would this be incorporated in the bulbout, or how would that work?
Well, it's going to be tricky because we need to determine all the utilities there. There is a real maze of utilities under the sidewalk. So until we get in there and figure out what's out there, we won't know what that design will be.
So it might not be feasible at all?
Potentially, it'll be a little bit smaller than we would like, yes.
And so you can't even project what the cost is?
Well, the biggest, you know, the most, we can look at the area we want to get and it'll be less, if, if anything, because you can't, we're not going to ask them to relocate utilities, you know. So we're trying to get as much of that treatment as we can.
Could you go back to the other conditions that you object to?
Well, let me just ask Maurice, the bulbout, I assume this comes from Public Works and somehow through traffic. The comment that this might back up and queue cars, especially turning lefts, and then wanting to take a right onto Hollis.
So the reason why you really would need a left turn lane there, it's really not needed right now. We only have about 20 cars coming in the eastbound direction. And that's not going to increase with this project. So 20 cars at peak hour. So there's not a lot of opposing traffic for that left turn move. So I, I don't see the reduction in that one lane to be critical on this project.
Well, I see it as a reduction of two lanes because when you do turn, I did it today, you come out of the lot, you take a left. You have a left turn lane, but you have enough space to take a right on Hollis. So somebody going straight can stay in the middle, somebody can go left, somebody can go right, right now with the two bulbouts, that eliminates that. As soon as you go left, you're at the light. If you're going left, you've got your signal on, it's five o'clock and everyone's going home from Novartis or what have you. You're stuck there. And if he's, they, if IKEA has three or four customers, then it queues back.
Right. Well, what I'm saying is when people leave from Novartis peak hour, there's only about 20 cars. That's about the most we get.
Yeah.
We're going to have one lane in each direction if we build the bulbouts. And that'll be enough for cars to turn left or right or go straight.
You don't think it would restrict the right turn? Right now, a car could turn left or right at the same time.
And stay straight.
But they couldn't do that with the bulbout.
With the bulbout, you'll, you'll have one lane, one car that can move at a time.
To do all those things.
Which is not dissimilar from many other intersections in Emoryville.
Oh, no. Not suggesting that at all.
Yeah, it's very wide.
It changes that intersection dramatically, though.
But it would be designed to allow for the flow of bicycles.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, we're still on questions. Art, do you have any more questions for?
Could you go back to the
Step up to the mic here.
Could you go back to the screen, yeah? Do you know the cost of the bicycle monitoring devices?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
He's objecting to the bicycle monitoring cameras.
Do you know approximate cost of the one we have there and how much three more and integrating it into the network would be?
It depends. If we can expand the system there, they're going to probably cost in the order of $10,000 to $12,000 a camera.
A camera.
Is there a lot of bicycle traffic in that area?
Well, it's, 53rd Street's supposed to be a bike boulevard, so that's what we're trying to-
Yep.
Could you just limit the bicycle monitoring cameras to a certain dollar amount rather than making a general?
I will caution the commissioner, remind the commission that the cost of, of any particular condition of approval should not factor into your consideration.
We're just trying to get a handle of this because it seems four or five of these are cost things. Maybe the first one is the only one that isn't. But anyway, we appreciate that, Maurice. Is there any more questions for Maurice? Thank you, Maurice. Any questions for the applicant going more? Art, you want?
I was wondering if the staff had a suggestion about the six to 12 months. I, I could see his point of view. In six months, he might be out of business. I think we have to assure him that that's not going to happen. I mean, we can't just have a blanket cancellation of a person's permit in six months. It doesn't seem reasonable.
That's not what the condition is.
Would you explain it to me, please?
The condition is that IKEA will provide us with, I think it's monthly counts of their customer activity and their truck activity at this location. And after six months, I will determine based on the information we've gotten and any feedback we've gotten from the neighbors and our own observations or whatever, if there appears to be a problem. If this appears that it's not operating the way it was characterized to the commission. And, and it's creating problems for the neighborhood. And if that is the case, then I will refer it back to the commission for a review, for a hearing. It's not a revocation. A revocation is a really big deal that requires evidentiary hearings and an ultimate decision by the city council. This would not take away the permit. It would allow the commission to modify some of the conditions of approval if that, if you felt that was appropriate in order to fine tune the project to make it, you know, more accurately meet the way it was characterized to you. And then that again would occur after a year. So six months and 12 months after they begin work, I mean, after they begin operations. If I find after six months that there's no problem, but I find after 12 months there is, then I could refer it back to you then. If I find there's a problem at six months and I refer it back to you and you modify the conditions-
Refer back to the commission.
Refer back to the commission and then you modify it. And then after 12 months, there's no more problems, I wouldn't refer it back to you a second time.
And that's a conditional use permit. And that's, that's what I'm used to. And that's something I wouldn't give up.
That's what we are recommending.
Yeah.
Frank.
We've had these before, yes.
With the operational review, if for instance, it was considered a problem and there were, say, six times as much traffic as expected, have you thought about any ways to reduce the traffic? I'm not even, I'm not quite certain also how the customer data works into the traffic. You know, what exact, what items, how, how did you figure that all out? I know it's probably quite complex and at the same time, it, it does seem to be important.
It is complex. It's complex because we don't have the goods in the warehouse, in the offsite warehouse today to be able to monitor what would actually happen. And so these are projections. And we've used our best estimates to come up with those projections. So there are a lot of factors. The number of goods that we, that would be carried or handed out or picked up by customers in this facility is significantly less than the number of customers today that use our full-serve warehouse. In other words, that wait for goods to be brought out to them. And that's because when this is moved offsite, onsite, we're able to expand the number of goods that customers can pick themselves. So what is that mix of products exactly? Which ones are going to stay? Which ones are going to go? We did our best estimate to figure out what that was. We then looked at what the number of what we call, well, customers that use the full-serve during that 14-day period. We remove the ones that would, that would not use that in the future because those goods are immediately available onsite. We then used a factor for home delivery because we deliver goods home. And so these are that's how, basically how we came up with those estimates. What we did is we looked at 14-day period. We looked at weekdays. There was a high and a low. We threw those out. We took the average. And that was it. Now, this is not a calculation that we can just print off the computer. The person that did that calculation spent, I don't know how many hours, she hasn't told me, but a lot, to go back and manually count and, and adjust all of these full-serve handout transactions.
So I guess that, that's still, my question is your issue with having a review at, at six to 12 months seems a little bit difficult considering you're giving the best guess and we really don't know what's going to happen. So.
We don't, but the traffic consultant has taken that into account by looking at, if we're off by a factor of five times, that's five, that's a 500% error margin that the traffic consultant has taken into account. We've also looked at, what is our highest, what's our peak period? What is our, what are our peak days? And arguably, we took the two highest volume days and did that same calculation for those days. And we ended up with instead of 75, about 130 trips. So by the traffic consultant's calculations, if you take the 75 times five, I don't know if I can do that math, but it's, was it 375 trips, a factor of five. So I think that that has already been taken into account.
I, I think the question nobody's asking is, well, what are you worried about?
We don't know what the conditions would be. It's an open checkbook essentially for the city. Not that this body is going to act unreasonably, but we can't quantify either in terms of dollars or operationally what those requirements may be. We don't know what they are. We know what we need in order to operate this facility. We have worked very hard to listen to and respond to concerns. We've reduced the hours and I can, I can go back and review what all those are, but we've worked very hard to on the city and the community and listening to their responses to react to these issues. We also have a pretty good track record, I think, with the city before this issue altogether in the last 10 years that we've operated and working cooperatively to resolve problems.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Let's go down here. Buzz? No comments, Gail?
Have any questions?
No questions?
Well, you have a separate presentation for the landscape architecture.
Well, what we were going to do is if there were questions of landscape architect, ask her to come up and respond to them.
Okay, I would like that. I would, I would like the landscape architect to kind of walk through the design.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Really?
Overall.
What frontages, the frontage of 53rd Street, which is our green street? Maybe if you can talk about how you're addressing the, the green street aspect of it.
Could you introduce yourself too?
Pardon me?
Introduce yourself, please.
Oh, yes. I'm Andrea Swanson, landscape architect with Thomas Bach and Associates. Along the green street, you can see, I can't, oh, there it is. The top, those there, we have new street trees in here. And we use grasses in there because these are also functioning as what was called a rain garden or bioinfiltration basin. And so we're limited to the kinds of plant materials that can be installed in them. And those planters are to take the water off the sidewalk. And these lower planters here, we initially had trees there, but because of the quantity of utilities, you can see all those boxes there. That's all great big transformer boxes and and it's not prudent to put trees in that area. Along, right in here, that's also bioinfiltration basins or rain gardens that serve the parking lot. So again, we're restricted to the kinds of plant material that we can put in there. We used Ramnos Californica, which is a a native California plant that's very drought tolerant as a hedge. And then we have red bud as a small tree. We can't put great big trees in there because then it, it gums up the filtration system and it doesn't work. In the, at the top end, we have some big evergreen trees where we could put them to try and provide additional screening. Also, we use very large shrubs. In this area here, we'll give a complete screen from the parking lot.
Could you quantify big and?
Big, eight, nine feet.
Okay.
For the shrubs. So between the tree canopy, bottom of the tree canopy and the ground, it would fill up with the shrubs.
Okay. And right in that area where you've got the cursor right now, could you talk about, you know, what the pedestrian's going to experience? And my concern is like the buffer between the, the surface parking and the sidewalk and, and what, what's the pedestrian going to experience along here?
When the pedestrian who's walking down the street, not coming into the project, walking down the street. As they come down the street, they'll walk underneath the three crepe myrtles that are in the parkway. Where's mine? There it is. Right in there. And then they'll go across here. And then in here, there's, there's grasses that'll be about two feet tall. On this side, they'll be blooming, early spring blooming purple flowers. There's also a grade change in here, so the parking lot is actually a little higher than the ground than the sidewalk. So there's a railing that currently exists, which is not moving. And on the inboard side of that would be a hedge about four feet tall, which would block, block the front of the cars. On the inside of that, along the fronts of the parked cars, there's also grasses which are part of the infiltration basin system. When you get down to the corner, there's an, where is it? Oh. There's an entryway into the plaza from this pedestrian, this crosswalk. Also, there's two existing staircases here. This is the ADA accessible route to the plaza. So as you get down here, your grade is dropping a little bit more as you get to this corner. So there's a little retaining wall with the existing railing. You come around the corner, we're backing the railing up off, right now, it's right at the back of the sidewalk. We're backing it up about six feet and carrying the landscape character from the plaza out to the sidewalk. There's still going to be, there's a little change of grade.
So on, on Hollis, the, the rail gets moved back?
Yes.
But not on 53rd?
Right. There isn't anywhere to put it. Because we'd be in the parking lot. And I have to have that swale on the inboard side of the parking lot.
One of my concerns right now is when I walk past that rail, it feels like a wall and it doesn't, I don't feel like I'm connecting with nature and the gardens and things. I feel like I'm up against a wall. How will you deal with that?
Well, because, because I think part of your concern is, I mean, the railing is, is transparent. I mean, it's a railing, right? So, so certainly I can't, I can't address the fact that the sidewalk is a certain width and the wall has to be there at the property edge. But I can address, if you're walking by, you'll see a hedgerow there where now there's nothing. And, and you'll have trees above you, small trees, be granted, but there will be small trees along as you walk there.
I guess I'm concerned about creating more of a wall.
I'm sorry. Well, my, my, my main concern was that as you walk by, you didn't want to see the front of parked cars.
Right, right.
So that's what I was really trying to address as well as what I actually could plant in the planter. So I want it to be visible from the inside.
Right. So what's the distance between the rail and the parked cars?
About five feet, I believe. And it's a, it's a, it's a dished-out planter surface or it's, it's recessed.
Okay. And then what would-
So I needed something that would grow up above the level of the, of the recessed planter, which has like, you know, overflow capacity in it.
And so if you could just again, walk me through what's up against the rail or?
Can you give me the, I need to change the slide. No, I want to go to that extra side with the plaza on it. Sorry, second. I don't know how to work the thing. At the very end, keep going there. Now, could you make it bigger? No? Okay. Okay, here's, here's the plaza corner right here and you can see what we have planted. And that, that, this is just right before you get to the plaza along the street. So we have the, the sarsas in here and then the hedgerow there and then the, I can move it back, I can move the hedgerow back and forth so that the grasses are on this side part of the time and the hedgerows on that side. I didn't want the cars to hit the hedge.
Right.
So, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm totally open to, you know, adjusting the plant material to, to suit your walking experience.
John, are you looking for screening of the parking?
I'm looking for screening of the parking, but at the same time, not something that feels like a wall and imposing. Right now, it feels rather imposing to me when I walk next to that. And because we're adding the, the planting strip, we're, it's, it's along the street side, you know, we're moving the pedestrians more towards the wall, even though that is a very generous sidewalk.
Yeah, okay.
It's a 12-foot wide sidewalk.
Yeah, it's pretty wide, yeah.
And what's the width of the, the, the grass planting next to?
Right in there? I think it's about four feet also, right in there. You can just see the little corner of it there.
So that still leaves a very generous walking path then?
Very, yes.
I think that's-
Yeah, the renderings kind of make it look nice, but they're of course
Yeah, well, that's why I wanted-
Computer-generated renderings.
Well, I wanted to show this one because it's unadulterated with no color. So that's really what you see is what you're going to get there. In that picture.
Going back over Vanessa?
Question or maybe question slash comment? The existing trees that Brisbane box need to be removed because of the rain garden, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, they will take it.
So if that was removed as a requirement, they could remain?
We can't remove it as a requirement. It's the state law.
It's a state law.
You have to, you have to treat your, your parking lot.
Is there any way to work around them?
I'd have to talk to the civil engineer. We, I wanted to save them. They're right abutted against that wall. So anything that we do, like you have to, in order to do the rain garden, you got to pull all the soil out. You have to put in a, a drain and you put in a special kind of soil mix, then you plant the plants. So the trees existing wouldn't stand for that. That's true. And, and they, they wouldn't, they wouldn't make it. And then also, their existence will inhibit the function of the planter because they're so big. They, the, there's only certain kinds of trees you can plant in those bioinfiltration basins and they're pretty small.
It is a, it's, it's kind of a sad thing because- It is a, it's, it's kind of a sad thing because the trees that you're going to plant will be lucky if they get 15 feet tall.
They'll be much smaller, yes.
And that sort of defeats a lot of the purpose. It's quite sad to lose the ones we have.
Right, right. Yeah, it's always a catch-22 between, you know, what we're required to do for the, for the C3. It happens over and over again to me.
Yeah, we'll probably hear something about the trees in public comment. Is there anybody, any other questions from? Okay, seeing none?
I had one.
Oh, wait, we have one more.
This is getting back to the bulbouts. It may cost you more in the long run, but is it possible to put in temporary bulbouts like we did in the triangle to see if it works? And if, if it doesn't work based on our director's decision, then you'd put them in permanently.
I think it's a pretty heavy cost for an experiment.
A lot, a lot less than putting in the bulbouts.
I'm sorry, I may be confused. Are you asking about installation of the bulbouts?
He's suggesting, go ahead, Charlie.
What Commissioner Hoff is referring to is over in the east neighborhood of town, we did a, we tried a bunch of different configurations of medians and bulbouts and things until we finally found something that worked. And we did it with asphalt curbs. An asphalt curb just laid down on top of the existing pavement. So, it didn't involve digging out the existing pavement, pouring any concrete curb or gutter or anything like that. It was just an asphalt curb that went in, I think was painted, so you wouldn't run into it. People couldn't drive over it. It acted like a regular curb, but it was a very inexpensive, temporary kind of thing. And then when, when they decided to take them out, they just brought a bulldozer in and, you know, just kind of scraped them off.
Yeah, some worked, some didn't. Some people hated them so much that they came here and insisted that they go.
And now, after how many years is it, we're finally putting in the permanent?
And now we've made.
Measures with the actual bulbouts and traffic circles and things.
I suppose we'll get to that when we start talking about six and 12-month review. You know, maybe a concession can be temporary. But anyway, that's getting into comments instead of questions, so.
Question?
Question for the, about the bulbouts. If, if we find that the bulbouts are inhibiting traffic from flowing, getting out, you know, getting out of the parking lot, et cetera, et cetera, and we have to remove them, would that change the level of service on 53rd?
Would you like the traffic engineer to respond to that?
I guess I would. Sorry.
The, the level of service is A, whether you have the bulbouts or not. But with the bulbouts, you have one lane for the cars to turn from 53rd onto Hollis. Without the bulbout, you have two lanes. So, it would be easier without the bulbouts for cars.
Doesn't change the level of service, though?
Yeah, it does not change the level of service.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Steven? Question for staff.
Charlie, I had a quick question as far as, I would assume Level 3 is a primary use? And that, I mean, are we talking?
Level 3, yeah.
And that IKEA would be an accessory use?
Secondary.
Secondary, not accessory?
No.
Okay, there's a big distinction.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a definition of secondary use?
Not really.
I didn't find one.
It's not in, it's not in the, I'm sure this will come up later, but since you brought it up, I'll take a stab at beginning that. The interim zoning regulations, reflective of what is in the general plan, says that retail and light, excuse me, light wholesaling and distribution, which is basically what this is, is allowed in the OT District as a secondary use. It does not say accessory. If the interim zoning regulations had intended to refer to it as accessory, it would have said that because we do have a definition in the zoning ordinance of accessory uses. And in fact, there's a whole section of the zoning ordinance that describes accessory uses and has regulations for them and talks about what they are. So, if this was intended to refer to an accessory use, it would have said that and it would have referred to that section of the zoning ordinance. It doesn't. The term secondary refers more to something that's less, less than primary, I guess you could say. We looked at the dictionary, and the dictionary says it's something that comes later than the, than the primary thing, or something that is, you know, somewhat, somewhat less than the primary thing, or whatever. But in this case, I think the most important point to make here is that whether or not a use in the OT District is secondary is a finding. It's a finding for, to grant a conditional use permit. As a finding, that means that each commissioner must decide for him or herself whether or not you consider this use secondary. If you do, then you can make that finding. If you don't, then you cannot make that finding. It's up to each of you to decide.
So, we're not under the same burden of finding a link between the primary use and the accessory use, or the relatedness?
No, it has nothing to do with accessory.
That's totally not applicable in this case.
No, it has nothing to do with accessory uses.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions?
Chair Flores, I have a comment.
Yes.
If and when you get to, if it appears that you're, you're going to approve this and you're going to impose conditions of approval, I would suggest that some of the things that were in the applicant's presentation are things that staff had not seen before. They're not in the conditions of approval right now, nor are they in the staff report or the project description. By virtue of having presented them to you in this PowerPoint presentation, we would argue that the applicant has introduced them into the record and therefore made them part of the project. And I'm referring to things like disabling the backup beepers, and, you know, some of these noise mitigation measures that they talked about. We hadn't seen those before.
Okay.
And there may be some other things in their presentation that they're saying is part of the project that we hadn't seen before, not in the conditions, not in the staff report. We would suggest that if you are going to improve this, that you incorporate by reference any conditions that the applicant has included in the project from this presentation.
The positive ones.
Well, anything you think is appropriate, but yeah, I mean.
And, and the objections, then we just have to go through those one at a time, or we'll hear a motion that will suggest they're in or out. Thank you. Okay, well, that's the end of the question, and song and dance, as they say, and we will open the public hearing. Charlie, you're going to call off speaker cards. Please step to the microphone, introduce yourself. You'll have three minutes to speak. And then, please sign in to the right by Ann over there.
There's no need to sign in.
Oh, I'm sorry, no need to sign in here.
You've filled out a card, you don't need to sign in.
No need to sign in, just introduce yourself.
So, I have about 16 speaker cards here. As Chair Flores said, you're limited to three minutes each. I'm going to read the three names. So, I'd ask that the first person come to the microphone, make your comments, and the next, the other two people line up and get ready to speak. And then when that person's done, I'll read the next three names and so forth so that we can move this along. And I'm sorry, if I butcher your name, I'll do the best I can to read your handwriting. Some of these, I'm not sure I can read so well. So, the first three speakers, Folad Satterfield, Marcia Dubois, or Deboz, and Joan Bosart.
Good evening. Good evening. Chairman Flores, commissioners. I've been asked to present the commission with these documents. One for mission statement for quality of life, and the second is petition to Emeryville Planning Commission from the 53rd Street neighborhood residents and others affected by the IKEA proposal. Should I give these to? I would like to read the mission statement for quality of life. The city's commission, commitment to develop a city dedicated to the cultivation of the community and the quiet enjoyment of residential property is an important reason why many of us chose to live here and work in Emeryville. This includes the award-winning general plan land use for Greenway, East-West pedestrian bicycle bridge connector, the Emery Go-Round and zoning regulations that seek to harmoniously bring together residential and mixed use and office technology uses. We therefore oppose IKEA's plan to convert a portion of the Level 3 building at 5,000 Hollis Street on 53rd into a warehouse customer pickup facility, as contrary to the city's commitment. One, this project will be incompatible with Emeryville's visionary, long-term plan for the future of 53rd Street as a Greenway and pedestrian bicycle bridge connector. Two, unlike an office technology facility whose employees keep regular hours, this use will result in continuous increase of traffic. Three, high-volume warehouse and customer pickup activity from early morning until mid-evening, seven days a week, will negatively affect the quality of life, property values, and adjacent residents. As a resident and employee of nearby businesses, we feel strongly that the presence of a warehouse customer pickup facility, especially for a large-scale regional retail operator, will be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood and community. We maintain that this project relies in part on inadequate data by peers and peers regarding traffic and upon failure by the city to determine an acceptable level of noise. We support an office technology facility at 5,000 Hollis Street as a use more compatible with the quiet enjoyment of property and the well-being of the Emeryville community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the applause, but let's try to keep the applause down because this is a public.
Okay, we have Marcia Dubois, Joan Bosart, and then Steve Centane.
I live in Emery Bay Village as well, and I'd like to talk a little bit about the 53rd Street area. Right now, there are about approximately 142 homes located there, two preschools, a high school, and a children's gym, and a park, which would be expanded later. And then the projected Greenway on 53rd Street leading to the overpass of the railroad tracks, it sounds like a great idea. It's part of the general plan. We, we thank you for working so hard on the general plan and creating that document, and we won an award for walkable, sustainable, livable urban community. This is our community. We are so close to this. I, I personally, and all of Emery Village, Emery Bay Village are so close to this. Go over there and look how close this is. There's no way, it's not going to drastically reduce our quality of life. And there's spur alley there, there's bicycles. I, I see this every day. There's a lot of traffic and a lot of activity there, and I just don't see this as compatible with a vision for Emeryville. I'd also like to mention that IKEA didn't plan well enough to begin with to be able to accommodate everything going on at their main store. That's why they have to do this in the first place. So, you can understand our reluctance to fully embrace their numbers at this point because we don't have any idea what it's really going to be like, just like they didn't have any idea their store would be that popular. And so, hence, this expansion. And they, they say they want to leave open the option of internet sales, so that dumps yet another bunch down. And now they're saying no reviews at six months and 12 months. So, that means it's a conditional use permit without the possibility of review, without real ability to go back and see if this is really working. It's just, it's just, I, I almost, I'm so upset about it, I almost don't know what to say. I mean, I have been losing sleep over this, and I'm very, very concerned about my property values, my quiet enjoyment of my home, the noise, the backup sounds. I, I just, I hope you don't approve this. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Joan Bosart, and I am going to be addressing a little bit of the mission statement, item 2A. Item 2, for those in the audience, is unlike an office technology facility whose employees commute at predictable times, IKEA's proposed use will result in a continual increase in traffic in the area around 53rd, Hollis, and San Pablo. Many residents of Emery Bay Village and along 53rd Street have chosen to live there because the surroundings offer a great quality of life. Zoning regulations have kept large-scale regional retail-related facilities west of the tracks and south of 40th Street. The area is zoned for office technology, ensuring a quiet and safe environment with slower traffic on evenings, evenings and weekends, important for the mental and physical health of residents, including the very young, the elderly, and the disabled. The fact that what is proposed is a high-volume retail warehouse customer pickup facility and not a retail store does not materially alter the impact of increased noise and traffic between Hollis and San Pablo on 53rd. And here, I'm going to throw in a few little comments of my own. Putting a "do not turn right" sign, I'm not sure how many people will really pay attention to that. Maybe some will, but a lot won't. I would also make, I'd like to make a personal observation. Vehicles arriving, finding a parking space, and departing after their merchandise pickup create their own particular sounds. But in addition, as I have observed myself at IKEA's main store, when already stressed customers load purchases onto vehicles, their voices often become raised and angry. Heated arguments are not unknown. As we all know from experience, the sounds of anger and distress, whether from a hungry baby or a frustrated adult, carry a long way. I cannot imagine what I have experienced at the main store would be any different at the proposed site and would disrupt further the peace of our community. And finally, echoing what Marcia just said, as far as the conditional use permit is concerned, I think you absolutely must have operational review at six and 12 months. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Centane. I also live at Emery Bay Village, and I'm expounding on point 2 in the document that you have, which reads, unlike an office technology facility whose employees keep regular hours, this use will result in a continual increase in traffic on 53rd between Hollis and San Pablo. Speaking to access, which is under B, 53rd Street provides access to residents, the Emeryville Child Development Center, head over, and head over heels. In their August 19, 2010 report to Miro Desai of City of Emeryville, traffic consultants, fair and peers, did not address traffic flow between Hollis and San Pablo on 53rd. Their traffic counts are based only on measurements at the intersection of 40th and Hollis and at 53rd and Hollis. That's a problem. The report also refers to the weekday daily volume on Hollis Street, south of 53rd, and the daily volume on 53rd between Hollis Street and the project driveway. Again, it did not measure the traffic between Hollis and San Pablo on 53rd. We're concerned about the increase of traffic coinciding with childcare pickup at the Emery Bay Child Development Center, head over heels, and Emeryville Secondary School, which could create an unsafe environment for parents and children. Another comment, I'd like to make my own. Large items on the pickup on the south end is great, but this supposedly is for all large items. They're supposedly secondary items, but most of this pickup will be for large items. So, everything will probably be on the south end anyway. But for them to have the, the north end open doesn't make any sense if this project goes through. I don't see why it should even be bothered to open the north end. I thank you for my time and hope you change your minds, or at least make your minds not to do this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next three speakers are Meg Cofflin, Lynn Turner, and Ryan McManus.
My name is Meg Cofflin. I live at Emery Bay Village, and I am a resident homeowner, and I've lived here since 2002. I'm referring to point 3 in your document. Can everyone hear me? Okay. High-volume warehouse and customer pickup activity from early morning until mid-evening, seven days a week, will negatively affect the quality of life and property value of the adjacent residents. IKEA's customer pickup traffic will introduce a pattern of activity that includes operations seven days a week from 10:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. This use will result in increase in noise and traffic on the surrounding 53rd, Hollis, and Pablo neighborhood, especially during anticipated peak periods. Increased noise and traffic can Increased noise and traffic can affect residents' health and will lead to a decrease in residential property values. Resolution CPC number UP 10-03-DR 10 from the City of Emeryville Planning Commission staff report, August 19, 2010 asserts that large truck loading and unloading at 5,000 Hollis from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on weekdays and 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on weekends will not result in any significant effects relating to noise. The report states that a large industrial building east of 5,000 Hollis, the north end is occupied by Head Over Heels with an outdoor children's playground approximately 144 feet from the loading docks, and a proposed eight-foot sound wall adjacent to the truck loading docks will block any truck noise. However, the city did not conduct a noise study to support this assertion. A new activity from a heavy truck with a 53-foot trailer and 20-foot trucks will likely result in increased noise levels. And in closing, I'd just like to say that this project is not harmonious with the neighborhood and with quality of life that we're used to enjoying. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lynn Turner, and I live in Emery Bay Village. This week, we received our Emeryville news. On page 8 is an article about the Emeryville General Plan receiving an award of merit from the American Planners Association. According to the article, the plan envisions Emeryville as a livable, walkable, sustainable urban community of mixed-use neighborhoods. Our 53rd and Hollis Street neighborhood is this kind of urban community. In addition to the residences and children's schools on the east side, 5,000 Hollis is surrounded by facilities for Novartis, Bayer, and Pixar, office technology uses whose employees contribute to the neighborhood field. They bike to work, eat lunch and practice Tai Chi in Hollis Green Park, and walk between job sites. Locating a facility for a high-volume, big-box regional retail store in our midst would irretrievably change the character of our neighborhood and set a bad precedent for our Emeryville community as a whole. I urge the planning commission to support the goals stated in the general plan and deny IKEA's application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ryan McManus. I'm corporate counsel for Level 3 Communications. Level 3 is the owner of the property located at 5,000 Hollis. For strategic reasons, Level 3 has decided to lease the excess space at the property for a number of reasons. We believe that IKEA is a more compatible and less impactful user to the neighborhood than other potential users, including call centers and large office tenants, which would be permitted by right and not likely subject to this conditional approval process. Level 3 supports IKEA's project and requests that the planning commission approve IKEA's application. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Kimberly Satterfield, Rachel Legree, and Derek Leechtie.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Satterfield. I'm a resident of the 53rd Street neighborhood, and I just wanted to put my voice in for opposition to this project. I absolutely do not believe that IKEA's project is for secondary use. I think that that is just wrong. And I guess my main concern is, in talking about the Bay Trail project, that I really hope that the commissioners are not going to be swayed by the decision to want IKEA to help with that project to sort of put the 53rd Street neighborhood, make that a secondary issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rachel Legree, and I did send you all an email regarding secondary use, and that is my primary concern. I don't believe that this facility is secondary use. Listening to the explanation, auxiliary and secondary are somehow different, but we're not really given a standard, concrete judgment, and that's what we're looking to you for. And you have to make that tonight, so that, you know, we can either go forward and protest this or be done with it. But auxiliary use means that the facility would be reasonably associated with the primary use, meaning it'd be a warehouse space for Level 3. That's not the case, nor are they selling to Level 3 patrons. So we've heard before, this was a prior warehouse space, and we want to return it to a warehouse space. Well, it's not anymore. This is office technology. This is the most key issue that you have to decide first. Is this the proper use of the space? There are 23 pages of conditions. There are 55 people who signed a petition. This is not secondary use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission, my name is Derek Leechtie. I'm the owner of the residential real property located at 103 Temescal Circle in Emery Bay Village, and I've been the owner of this property since the residential development was built in 1981. I think the question before us here tonight is, what's the direction that Emeryville is going to take, or is taking? Open up your web browser, go to the City of Emeryville webpage, and the first thing you see is what a wonderful, livable community this is. I don't see anything on that front page about industrialization, big-box stores, and so on. So I think we have to take into consideration the fact that you have got a prize-winning general plan here, and now you're trying to, somebody's trying to pick it apart a little bit through a somewhat vague loophole about the usage of this property. So I ask the commission to think about the quality of life in Emeryville. I came around this area over 70 years ago, and Emeryville was an industrial city. There was a huge steel plant located where IKEA is now located. There were, it was a rail hub. There were assorted factories. But ladies and gentlemen, times have changed. Emeryville is now a totally different place. It is a place where we, yes, we want to integrate commercial and livable conditions for everybody, but take into mind what has happened here and what will happen with this establishment of this warehouse next to this residential area. I implore you and respectfully ask the members of the planning commission to take this into consideration, to stick to the principles of the Emeryville General Plan, and to use common sense and to reject this project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next three speakers are Christian Deschays, Gillian Belcher, and Ron Silberman.
So good evening, planning commission members. You receive many of my emails, and you're kind of aware of what's going on against this project.
Can you speak right to the mic?
In the microphone, okay. So one thing that I would notice is, in the presentation of the IKEA project, we never, the project was never located into context, in context with the surrounding, what's around this project? I mean, there's residences, and there's also a park across the street, and there's a campus across the street, and they're both like of a better quality of architecture. They're, were designed by famous and world-renowned architects, and so what I'm saying is, what is proposed is not really related to what's across the street. My other concern is white-chipping the city master plan again. We just heard that on, I just heard in the previous item that was here before, what was it? You approved something like removing a park and replacing it with a multi-use. So those are, this is like, white-chipping the master plan. The master plan has been approved, and everybody would like to stay with it, and this is not what is planned for our community. Thirdly, the third items I would like to discuss is the landscaping. The landscaping, they're proposing a sound wall that is eight feet tall, and everybody knows that an eight-feet-tall sound wall will not diminish or reduce any sound. Often, the sound at the eight-feet-tall sound wall, the sound will be proposed, I mean, further away, and people will hear it, wear the sound even more. The landscaping also, the landscaping, it is already there at this building at Level 3, is kind of striking. It relates to the surrounding. We have those culinary trees that are part of the overhead structure. All of this will be demolished and replaced with a blue IKEA sign in gold, which is also not appropriate for this area, for this neighborhood. So, and also the planting, the planting that is proposed is very low-scale. Everything that the architect is proposing is not to scale with this giant mastodon building and architecture. So those are my comments, and I do not support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Gillian Belcher. I live in Emery Bay Village, and I've lived there since 1991, and I just want to say that I respect the planning commission and the city staff for trying to strike a balance in a mixed-use town with 8,500 people in it. I've watched it grow. I've watched it go from a city that had no amenities to a city that has a lot of resources and a lot of appeal. I have to state very clearly that I'm against this project and I'm in favor of the general plan. I've raised a daughter here. She went to the Emeryville Child Development Center from 18 months all the way to five years old. I just want to make a few more comments and not repeat things that have already been said, but in terms of the traffic study, one thing I'd like to point out is that it was done during the longest daylight time of the year, and when the days are shortened and it's raining, it'll become very congested and confusing. What the traffic study did not reflect is what it's like to live on 53rd Street and what it's like to access the neighborhood, what it's like to walk to classes, what it's like to bicycle down the street. Right now, when you come out the most west exit of Emery Bay Village, there's spur alley that are bicycles that are going back and forth, there are pedestrians that are going back and forth, and I've seen near accidents just the way the traffic is right now, because to facing 53rd Street next to the IKEA-proposed site, on the left, there's a rise of a hill, and cars come down there really fast, and the cars that come out of spur alley, they turn right and they turn left, and when I'm sitting there, looking back and forth, sometimes I don't catch them both happening at the same time. And that left-hand turn lane on 53rd and Hollis Street is really needed. Right now, Novartis has bobtail trucks and semi-trucks that access that Novartis warehouse now, so that wasn't even mentioned in the traffic study at all. Recently, there was a semi that was parked down the center part from Hollis all the way through Novartis, and it was there for quite a period of time because they had to do some kind of business there. So I don't feel, I work in a profession that uses a lot of statistics, and I have to say that it doesn't, it's very easy to use statistics and projections, but it doesn't reflect the human experience. And one of the things that IKEA presented at the Emery Bay Homeowners Association meeting was that when they first built IKEA, they totally projected incorrectly that their studies and all of the work that they, all their consultants and all the work that they put into that did not accurately reflect what happened to IKEA, and almost immediately they had to build that parking garage, and they said that they would have used that for the warehouse, but they were required to build the parking garage instead because of their poor planning. So I don't understand what Emery Bay Village gets out of a multinational corporation coming to our exact perimeter. It makes no sense to me.
Thank you.
My name is Ron Silberman, and I manage and I'm a part-owner of the property where Head Over Heels is located. And I was going to make some objective statements about this project, because I'm not as biased as the people that live at Emery Bay Village, but I have been around there for over 20 years, observing the neighborhood and seeing what is going on. And as you probably might remember, originally that project was the Pacific Stereo Warehouse. Then at, prior to the Level 3 purchasing it, it was going to be converted into a housing project that had a lot of support. The market tanked. Pixar was going to be a housing project, so then it became a co-location facility. It's basically an empty warehouse. No one here really knows what that project would be like if it was used to its full capacity. The reality is, it will be a functioning warehouse now. When the applicant mentioned about exploring other properties, what is the status of the empty buildings and the pads at the Bay Bridge Shopping Center? The former Home Depot facility looks to be under construction. There's signs down there about pads for sale, or Toys R' Us is probably out of business, or there's lots of, there's lots of other options. And I was going to make some comments about sound walls, about landscape maintenance, but I have to say, if I lived at Emery Bay Village, I would be appalled to have a building board with a bright blue sign driving down Hollis Street, which is just an extension of a drive-by building sign, as if you are driving by the freeway attracted to another facility. So I'm not even going to get into the objective aspects. I would also say that the traffic study probably did not include the bikes, or the cars, or the pedestrians coming out of spur alley, and I think that's an important consideration also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Three more speakers? Actually, six more. Six, well, the next three, please. Daniel, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, there's a total of six more. The next three are Daniel McWilliam, Dusty Bernard, and Charles Schuman.
I live in Emery Bay Village. One thing I would like the commission to bear in mind as they consider this plan is that there's more involved in this than just the IKEA plan, because we're also coming together with the Emeryville Center for Community Life and its proposed 97 parking spaces and increased traffic on 47th. So now you've got problems on 47th proposed, plus these problems on 53rd, and we're getting mashed in the middle, okay? So it's not just this, it's 47th and 53rd. So I hope you bear that in mind and reject this project and plan.
Thank you. There's a portable mic right, there you go.
My name is Dusty Bernard. I've lived in Emery Bay Village for 21 years. As has been quite aptly pointed out tonight, the site that's proposed is good for IKEA.
Could you hold the mic closer to your mouth?
It's good for IKEA, but it offers...
It may not be on. I'm sorry. We really want to hear what you're saying.
Now, is it good?
Closer.
It says it's on.
Charlie, you want to help her out?
Hello?
Ah, yes.
Okay. The site that's proposed is good for IKEA, but it offers absolutely nothing to the surrounding neighborhood. The best IKEA can do is suggest imperfect mitigation measures as they plan to change for the worse the entire atmosphere of the neighborhood I have lived in for 21 years. I know many neighbors of mine have voiced tonight most of the reasons I'm opposed to the plan, so I'll just describe one particular way I would be negatively affected. People who use wheelchairs and children have generally something in common. They're both short. That decreases their visibility. I often go from Emery Bay Village down 53rd Street to the Emery Go-Round, to the park, aiming towards 40th Street, and so on. Emery Bay Village is separated from the proposed site by a driveway, and that driveway has cars that come shooting out of it. The visibility, because of the shrubbery, is very bad, and I have nearly been hit more than once over the course of years. The increased plantings that IKEA is proposing, it sounds as though they will further obscure the driveway into IKEA and make it even more dangerous for short people, dogs, children, and wheelchair users to safely pass. Traffic is no friend to us. For all the reasons you're hearing tonight, I ask you to stop IKEA from going forward with its plans. It's a community-destroying proposition.
Thank you. Although we'll never be able to control the applause, but this, again, is a public meeting, not a movie.
Hello. Is this on? I'm Charlie Schuman. I'm the treasurer of Emery Bay Village. I represent 112 people who have different opinions, so I'm not going to state an opinion tonight, but I want to tell you some of the concerns I have. Part of what I do is I'm a steward of the quality of... Part of what I do is I'm a steward of the quality of, of life at Emery Bay Village. When we first had our meeting with IKEA, a couple of things came out in a blaring way. First, let me read the mission statement of IKEA that I've gotten from the Internet. Create a better everyday life for the many. That speaks directly to quality of life. At the meeting, Emery Bay Village was not mentioned. There was a great presentation, this man gives a wonderful presentation, about the growth for IKEA, all the benefits for IKEA. Every time a question was asked, it came back to the benefits of IKEA. I decided to ask questions about growth and basically took him through three questions to determine what they would do to support our community. The last question is, would you do anything? And he said, no. That was a pretty blatant statement, I thought. You've heard a lot of the quality issues we're talking about here tonight. The contradiction I feel here is their mission statement, which is the better everyday life for people, and yet, what will happen here, it will reduce ours, and so our community will suffer from this. I feel that the cosmetic improvements that are out there, granted, there's an attempt of that, but the long-term effect with IKEA's growth, their growth in dollars will only increase, increase the traffic and the burden on our community. So, I look at this and I'm asking the question, are we the few in IKEA's definition? And are they willing to sacrifice our quality of life for their bottom line? Thank you.
Thank you. And our last three speakers are?
Jack Asher, Judy Inoue, and Syle Convery. And Brian Donahue.
Hi, my name is Jack Asher. I live over in the Triangle neighborhood, but Monday through Friday, you find me at ECDC, right? Because both of my kids are there. I'm the president of the Parents Group, and I want you to know that while the building is across the street, our kids are out in the community. They go on walks, and during the rainy season, they walk over to Head Over Heels so that they can, you know, burn a little daylight over there and some energy. And so, I'm worried about any increased traffic in this area. We have, you know, infants in strollers being pushed by teachers. We have kids who are, are young, right? They, they know how to hold hands, but I, you know, you worry about them around cars. And the traffic study, when it was conducted, I don't think it overlapped with the Ravens football team that started using the secondary school's field, which, on the one hand, is wonderful because it brings more families to our community, but oh my God, it was a traffic nightmare, okay? You, it was SUVs and kids everywhere. And that's the spot for our multi-use facility, right? That's the heartbeat of Emeryville. We're supposed to be building the ECL there. That's where everyone's supposed to be biking, walking, driving, in order to meet, to gather, and to go to school. And so, when we think about the peak hours of usage of that facility, it's not really during school hours. I think we're a small school district. We're going to have a lot of use, you know, in the evenings, in the early morning, and on the weekend. So, I just want you to think about the fact that this is a place that, that has a lot of children and is really a, a hub and a community for families in Emeryville, and I think we need to preserve those spots that provide a resource for families. And I'm also a little bit concerned about IKEA's discussion about the conditions. I understand that, you know, they're worried about uncertainty. This introduces a lot of uncertainty into the lives of the people who live in Emery Bay Village, uncertainty as far as their property values go. So, the people who live and work in that area, who have kids going to daycare, we're dealing with uncertainty too. Thanks.
I'm Judy Inoue, and I also live in Emery Bay Village.
Did you speak into the mic?
Judy Inoue, I also live in Emery Bay Village. I've been there since nineteen eighty-six, raised three kids, and I'd just like to piggyback on what everybody else is saying, that especially with the kids. The kids walk. My back is, my patio is to the backstreet, Forty-seventh. The kids walk at least three times a week. They have outings at the swimming pool, and, you know, it's, it, like they say, it is not safe if you're going to put a big building on the corner, as Joan said, from the wheelchairs, from the kids, from the bikes, from the pedestrians. And I've also seen accidents happen in spur, whatever the little alley is. Okay? The IKEA money will go up, their, our property value will go down. So, we won't benefit from IKEA at all. It's just going to box our little community in, like they said, the life center would be on the front of Forty-seventh and San Pablo. And if this is on the back, our quality of life will be going down. We won't be able to walk, and our property value will be going down, and we'll be boxed in. So, planning committee, please consider, I am opposing IKEA coming in. Please be considerate of our little community so we can still stay, you know, a nice community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sheila Convery, and I too, amazingly enough, there are lots of us who have lived in Emeryville for years. Mine is twenty-three years, and I too have raised children here. When I came, there were three thousand of us living in this city, and so it was actually kind of easy to know everybody. And I'm looking at all of you, and I've met one of you, and I recognize some of you, but I don't know any of you. This would not have happened twenty years ago. We would all have known each other. So, one thing I would ask of all of you, I don't know where you live, but I want you to think about how you would feel if this building were going to be literally as close to a unit as you are if you went through those doors. I used to live at Four Emery Bay Drive, which is near the west entrance of Emery Bay Village, and I literally, I don't have a good throwing arm, but I could throw a ball if I had, and it would land in that little parking lot. So, I would ask you, I don't live there anymore, I live further into the complex. So, I'd like you to imagine if you were there, seven AM in the morning, drinking your coffee, and you hear the beeping, you start hearing the noise. Fast forward to the evening time, and you're sitting trying to have dinner with friends. Again, you hear the beeping, and you hear the noise. I ask you to think about walking your dog, walking your children, walking your grandchildren, walking yourself, and you're trying to navigate traffic coming out of Emery Bay Village, traffic going in and out of IKEA, traffic going into spur alley, traffic going out of spur alley, traffic coming around the corner up Fifty-third Street. That takes a feat, which is becoming increasingly difficult for me, as I grow a little older, to navigate all of those barriers and potential, potential obstacles that are there. This will only grow worse with IKEA. When I moved here, there was a huge push to make Emeryville conducive for families, and Emery Bay Village was lauded as the one place that one could actually raise a family. I think that has changed for the better, thanks to good planning on your part and the city. I do think that allowing IKEA to go into probably the first real residential area in the city would be a huge mistake. My last thing has to do with aesthetics. Everything that everybody says when they walk into Emery Bay Village is, wow, this place looks gorgeous. It is literally this tree-filled, you know, the, the realtors like to use the word oasis, but it is kind of true. But I would like you to imagine having this, I'm sorry, I do like many of the products, lots of people have said that, but the outside of those buildings are hideous. And when that building came to you originally, you did your utmost, the Commissioners who were sitting here, to try and get IKEA to change the outside of that building, and you were semi-successful. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We have two more speakers, Brian Donahue and Jill Martin, and it looks like we have another one. Brian Donahue, Jill Martin, and Forrest G. And if there are anyone else who wants to speak on this item, please turn in a speaker card now. Thank you.
Okay, I don't live in Emery Bay Village, but I have some problems with this. For one thing, you should know that the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, about a year ago, voted unanimously, I believe it was seven to zero, to adopt Berkeley's metrics for, for what should constitute a bicycle boulevard in, in Emeryville, and that is twenty-five, no more than twenty-five miles an hour for, for automobile traffic, and no more than three thousand ADT, average daily trips. As it turns out, Horton Street has already passed the three thousand ADT point, and we're in the process right now of rewriting our bicycle pedestrian plan, and hopefully this three thousand number will be adopted when the plan is done, but that was the unanimous vote of the BPAC. So, this project will certainly dump, will exacerbate the traffic on Horton Street, absolutely, that's demonstrable, even though they say that they're only going to use Hollis Street. I'm sure plenty will use Horton Street as a shortcut as Hollis Street gets filled up, and other people will also use Horton Street as Hollis Street gets filled up by this project. And also, we have no idea what the traffic ADT on Fifty-third Street is, which is also going to be a bicycle boulevard. So, if our bike, if our bike plan says no more than three thousand ADT, this project could destroy our bike boulevards. So, we don't know, so the question is, I don't think we should move forward with this giant looming question mark. We're supposed to be a city that's honoring bicycling as a form of transportation, so since we don't know if this is going to exacerbate the three thousand ADT that we're, that's most likely going to be required for bicycle boulevards, I don't, I think it's sort of reckless for you to just move ahead and let this happen. I think we need to find that out. The next point I wanted to say quickly, I think we need to consider the newness of our general plan. It was five years in the making. These things come every twenty-five years, general plans, and I believe that the closer you are to the inception of the plan, the more sacrosanct the spirit of the plan should be. So, since this plan is barely a year old, even though this, this warehouse managed to get a secondary use designation by, by scaling it back to slightly less than fifty percent of, of the use of the warehouse, I say that's sort of a cynical ploy, and I, I think that we should honor the general plan's spirit, especially in the, with, since we just did this plan a year ago. Now, as general plans age, I think that we can be more willing to, to amend and, and to even to go against the spirit of the plans as they get, move on down towards twenty-five years, but, but they're supposed to be twenty-five-year documents, and I don't, I think we should be honoring the spirit of the general plan. And then the last point I wanted to say was, two more points, one, one real quick. This, this IKEA should, didn't talk about relocating this warehouse at Bay Street Site B, big piece of fallow land that's right to the north of, of IKEA, and I think that would be much more compatible space. And then I wanted to talk about the plaza that they're, that they're talking about being a gathering space for residents. I just can't see residents gathering at a shopping warehouse. I just can't see that.
Thank you. Next speaker. Hi.
I'm Jill Martin, and I also live in Emery Bay. Do that. I've been there about seven years.
If you can speak directly into the mic.
Okay, so I've lived there about seven years. One of the reasons that I moved there and why many of my neighbors have moved there is because of the quiet peacefulness that we experience in our community. It is the one amenity that we have as a condo association and development, and it is what gives our property value. If you take that away from us, you take away our property value, and you take away our quality of life. The other point I wanted to make is when IKEA came and talked to us, there was a point that was made that wasn't made here tonight, and that is that the signage and the IKEA presence there on the corner will bring people in who think that it's an IKEA extension, who think that it's, you know, a discount center. They won't know what it is, but it's going to contribute more traffic to the situation that ended up in the traffic report, because people are going to think that it's something other than it isn't, just passerbyers, you know, just traffic that comes along the street. It will definitely be a magnet for more than just the people who are coming to pick up their purchases from IKEA. That's the only other thing that I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Forrest G. And we have one more card, Miranda Olson.
I feel like Emeryville, Forrest J. live at, I'm a new resident to Emery Bay Village. I feel like the city of Emeryville has tried to make our part of Emeryville the center, and it's the, the child's center for Emeryville. And so, I find that this use of the big-box retailer really incompatible with that. I feel that it's not even interfering with my quality of life, but the children of Emeryville, and they are our future. I find it hard to believe that IKEA was not able to find a compatible use for their warehouse in West Oakland, which has high truck traffic, which has high pickup. A good example is the Granite Expo. Granite Expo has a retail outlet right across from Home Depot, and they have their big pickup, not very far, in West Oakland, a very, very compatible use. So, I really do oppose their, their placement of their big-box retail, tailor's location in the center of our children's heart. Thank you.
Thank you. And one more speaker.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Miranda Olson. I'm actually carless, but I use Zipcar, and I bicycle, and I'm a pedestrian on a regular basis. And I live in nine oh four six zero eight area code on Fifty-Fifth Street in Oakland, though. And my friend lives in the Emery Bay community. Bicycling, which I did from Fifty-third tonight to here, it wasn't the easiest situation. I don't think the additional burnout, or whatever you call it, bovout, would actually help, but bike monitoring cameras would. Things with the traffic studies and long-term planning for the city, many people haven't considered things like Target and Pixar's new increase, which will add traffic to Hollis Street, which is really great to bike on right now, but with that increased traffic, especially with large trucks turning, with lots of kids around, I don't think it's a really great idea. Also, Zipcar is a fantastic vehicle, and it's right there on Fifty-third Street in Hollis. It's wonderful to pick up, people use it all the time, and no offense, but Zipcar drivers do not tend to be the best drivers. So, imagine them going, oh my God, I don't drive all the time, and now there's all these big trucks around me, and there's traffic, and I'm stressing out, and anyway, I don't think it would be that great of a location for the warehouse. Also, with sound walls and city planning, as you know, sound walls attract graffiti. They're not going to do graffiti with the high school next door inside the IKEA location, but for these poor Emery Bay people who will have more teenagers lurking around the facilities. So, please consider not doing this. With our recession and everything right now, I'm sure IKEA, with its money and everything and investments, can find other buildings and actually build a new facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that all the speakers we have? Kind of bring it back to the commission, a couple of quick comments, and then we'll go out.
Excuse me, Chair Flores.
Yes.
Did you close the public hearing?
That closes the public hearing?
Thank you.
First of all, I just want to thank everyone for coming out. As you probably know, all seven of the commission members up here live in Emeryville. It's one point two square miles, so it's not far-fetched for us to all know each other. We go through growth problems and change in our communities as well, so just keep in mind that the seven of us also are Emeryvillians, and we really appreciate the turnout tonight and that everyone can step up to that microphone and make comments. It doesn't happen all the time, and for people listening out there, please come. That's my only comment I had on that, and, oh, and my time's up anyway. So, would anybody like to go first? John Sherman.
Okay, I'll go for it.
I'm going to step away from the mic for a second.
So, one of the things...
So one of the things that I brought up at the study session is, my first reaction to this was, wow, this is really a bad idea, until I looked at it. And what really struck me is how this is being used, the level of the impact on the community and the traffic and the noise, that it would be less than what could be built there. And I sincerely feel that what is being proposed here is actually going to have less of the neighborhood, impact on the neighborhood, than what could be built there. And I think we really have to look at the amount of traffic that Level 3 has, which is like nothing. And I think that really needs to be taken into consideration. And we need to, I think, sometimes we have a hard time wrapping our heads around some of the numbers, but when I see numbers like the 71 weekday trips spread over a large amount of time, that is a very light amount of traffic. So I just don't see the traffic impact. The other thing that kind of surprised me is the noise level. I made several trips, at least five trips to the neighborhood at different times, and I tried to go different times a day after work. When I would foresee the rush hour times, I went by bike, I went on foot, I drove my car, and just tried to hang around and just kind of observe things. And one of the things that struck me is, as serene-looking as your neighborhood is, and it's absolutely beautiful, and it is an oasis, but the ambient noise level there is relatively high. And I was very surprised at that, and I really don't see the impacts of what's being proposed here as being an increase to the noise level that is really going to make a perceptible difference. And I think they have done some good things with the sound wall to mitigate the noise of the semis. But I don't see those impacts. Now, when I look at, and I see this as a project that can be a win-win, and what I looked for the project is, what is going to support our general plan goals? And I was intimately involved in the general plan for the last five years, and it's really, really important to me that we bring about our goals. And what I see is that this is a project that is helping us reach those goals, because one of the things that I see it doing is definitely improving the street frontage on 53rd to bring forth more of a green street. We are eliminating surface parking, we're improving the streetscape, we're also improving the bicycle conditions with the video cameras, the bulbouts, easements for the Bay Trail. I think these are all important things. So one of the issues that I do, or concerns that I do have, is I think that all of the conditions of approval are very important, every one of them. And, you know, you raised concerns about, kind of open-ended, in the six-to-12-month review period. I think you have to look at the good faith of the city also. It's like, that kind of goes both ways, and I think that's incredibly important, that we be able to reevaluate this in six months if there are issues. And hopefully, there won't be issues. But I think all of those conditions are very important. So those are my comments.
Thank you, John. Go ahead, Art.
Thank you. I too served on the general plan commission for almost three years. And in my time on the commission with John and others, I feel that this project really does represent what the general plan asked for. The general plan says we want diversity of uses within the city. We're not building suburbia, we're building a central mixed-use city. And I think this project complies with the goals of the general plan. As far as personal effects, I guess it's in the eyes of the beholder, but I live across the street from Trader Vixx, and we don't have 100 cars. We have 200 cars a day and 10 trucks going by my apartment. You know what? You don't even notice it after a while. I don't feel offended by it at all. In fact, it's quite nice, because I get to use their parking lot. So I think, all in all, I believe this project will be an asset to the city, and I would support it.
Well, when the project initially came to the planning commission, I was thinking, well, they first said probably 40 trips a day, I thought, that's not a big deal. One truck a day, one big truck, 40 trucks a day. But as I have been listening to the residents of Emery Bay Village and looking at the traffic studies and looking at the other information, and thinking about the operational characteristics of this place, I have actually gone in the other direction, because I appreciate that the applicant has gone a long way to try to make accommodations. But I still think that this use, for one thing, I don't believe that it is a secondary use. It's about 250 square feet smaller than the primary use inside the building, but all of the activity is going to be going on outside the building, all of the cars, the amount of parking, the amount of truck loading, everything else that's happening says to me that that is going to be perceived as the primary use of the building. So I would be really hard-pressed to make that finding. The people who come to an office technology job are people who come regularly, who know where they're going, who know where they're parking, who know where the kids' schools are. The people who come from out of town to pick something up are just, they have their little wayfinding map, but that's not necessarily meaning that they're going to be aware of their surroundings and that they're going to be sensitive of their surroundings. We've designated 53rd Street as a bicycle boulevard, as a green street, as a special pedestrian bicycle area. And with the building of the bridge across the tracks, it's going to be even more so. So I have come to the position where I really feel that it's not a compatible use with the residential neighborhood. I think Emery Bay Village is a special place. In the general plan, we mentioned the Triangle, we mentioned Doyle-Hollis neighborhood, we mentioned Watergate, and I think it was sort of an omission that we didn't mention Emery Bay Village as a place with special character within our town. And I find it troubling that there are projections made as to the level of use. The applicant is not comfortable with saying, well, you know, we'll check back six months later, because they're not comfortable with the uncertainty. But in the same vein, he has mentioned that internet sales might be a possibility in the future. There could be shifts in the way the business is done. We don't have any certainty as to the level of use that's going to happen there either. So that's my comments for the moment.
Thank you. Gail. Mr. Stevens?
Oh, buzz. We're jumping all over the place. Well, I agree with John, basically, that I think the traffic is minimal, it would be less than what traffic could be for something that's approved right now that would not even come before the planning commission. And I think with that special condition that IKEA wasn't too happy about, six-month review, that if there are problems, they could be dealt with at that time.
I appreciate the success of IKEA and the contribution to the tax base of this town. And at the same time, I do believe that with our new general plan, this is not a compatible use. We've spent a lot of time making this general plan, and it does not include any regional retail within its center core. There's a reason for that. Actually, Gail mentioned quite a few of them. Folks are not familiar with the area. They tend to be not as aware of their surroundings, they don't know where they're going. This is a green street, a bicycle boulevard, there's our new community center of life is going to be there, and this is the spur alley, all these things make me feel nervous about having regional retail in this area, as well as setting a precedent for more regional retail filtering in this office technology space. So I also am not only questioning, but pretty darn sure it would not be a secondary use in terms of the level of use. Level 3, they're barely there, and in terms of impact on the city, IKEA would actually be the primary user. Debating on whether the semantics is the case is another thing. So I would not be able to support IKEA being in this location.
Thank you. I too have some problems with this, and the basic problems I have have been enunciated by the community. I want to commend the community for coming out in support of their beliefs, and I think they've been unified, and it's been very exemplary in how they've presented their case, very, very professionally. I see conflicts on 53rd Street between preschool, after-school, and the bike path and the pedestrian feel of 53rd. I see that this would be an unsafe situation. The compatibility issues in transforming a peaceful area, especially on the weekends, to me are very disturbing. And I basically distrust the projections. I don't believe them, and I think the wave of the future is internet, and I think people will be coming here more than they'll be coming to the store eventually. So I really feel that the projections are not valid in this case. And this is the first of any of IKEA's distribution centers, and I think that will be the testing lab, and I think we're going to all regret this eventually. The intensity of the use, Monday through Sunday, every day, is just not compatible in this area, which is surrounded by residential, pedestrian, children, people in wheelchairs, people of all ages and shapes and sizes. I don't see this being a very safe use in this area. And the thing that disturbs me is that large items, which is what they will have here, to me dictates large vehicles, large trucks, noisy, gas-emitting, fuming trucks that I don't think are going to fit in the nine-by-18 spaces that are on the site plan. I think this place is going to be congested, because I'm sure I can't pull my Prius up there and pick up a large item and fit it comfortably in my little eco-sensitive car. So I think this is going to be a parking lot that's going to be fraught with problems. It's not going to be vehicles, it's going to be large trucks, SUVs. People that have large items, they need large vehicles. And the diluted spirit of the general plan is disturbing. Everyone's pointed that out. I see that it only helps IKEA, not the neighborhood. And I think there are better locations off Mandela, or near the railroad tracks in North Emeryville, which I think would be more harmonious for this type of use.
Thank you, Stevens. Well, I've been in Emeryville for about eight years. I'm in the Triangle neighborhood, and like everyone else here, have seen changes even in those eight years. At 53rd and Adeline, I'm close to Oakland, but I'm next to a school, I'm across the street from a demo contractor, I'm next to big empty warehouses, and empty warehouses that have been converted and gotten very tall. Neighborhood dynamics have changed, and people have come together, not unlike what's happening in Emery Bay Village. It's great. It's part of, it's wonderful to be a part of a small community that's in the heart of the Bay Area. We're in the heart of such a vibrant urban environment that, but yet we have control. We can all sit here and be a part of every aspect of it. So I go back to lauding everybody coming here and all the comments that have been made. When this first came to me, and I spoke with the applicant, and then with staff, and then the applicant again, and then the study session, I was wavering. I wasn't sure if it worked there. I've obviously walked through Emery Bay many times as I campaigned last year, and it is an oasis in every sense of the word, beautiful place to live. Heard lots of stories about how it was made and where it came about, and those are exciting stories, but it's a wonderful place to be. We appreciate that it's there, and I think that goes without saying. I'm for urban infill. I'm for anti-sprawl. I'm for putting things in the infrastructure where we have it. There are many comments that said, put it somewhere else. That's exactly what I don't like to hear in this city that I plan to live the rest of my life in. I want to use what we have, and I don't want a new building built somewhere else. Maybe IKEA could find a place somewhere else, maybe they couldn't. Maybe they really wanted to be in Emeryville. Maybe that's the reason they came the first, when they chose the Emeryville building. I worry that the hall is full because it's IKEA. You know, if it was a local furniture manufacturer, what would it look like in here right now if the big four-letter word wasn't up? I don't see any other use for this warehouse than warehouse use. It's office technology, and I have to agree with a couple of other commissioners here and the reports that say that there would be a lot more traffic. I believe that there would be a lot more traffic, a lot more right turn up to San Pablo if this were another use, if this were office technology. There'd be a lot more people working there, a lot more people coming in in the morning, leaving at rush hour, and not taking a designed route on a map, but going up 53rd to San Pablo and taking that, because they know the 80s full. That's what I believe. I appreciate everyone's comments. I don't want to waiver on any of the staff recommendations, except the bulbouts. I think making them temporary is a good move for us now, because I don't believe that the bulbouts will work at all, in my opinion. So that's how I feel. I support this project. I do believe it supports the general plan. I think that the improvements are going to be a big improvement on that section of the road. That's my feeling. I'll call to question.
Can you identify the conditions that you feel the applicant has added? You said he added verbally some conditions. Do we have to identify them?
I'm not sure. I'd have to see the PowerPoint again, but there were some things in the noise mitigation slide in particular that were new things that we hadn't seen.
Do you want to pull that slide up, Charlie? Do you want to get this over with?
Well, the truck delivery is already in the conditions, the sound wall's in the conditions. Moving the oversized vehicle pickup to the south is in the project already. I guess disabling the enunciators, that means backup beepers, I think, is not in our conditions. I'm not sure what inflatable dock shelters.
Is that an OSHA issue?
Do you do that legally?
Well, we've required it in the past for noise waivers, and what, I mean, we've investigated it, and what we've found in the OSHA regulations, I believe, is that you have to have either backup beepers or a spotter. You've got to have a person behind the truck to warn people that the truck is backing up.
So we could put in the conditions that as long as they meet OSHA standards, they can omit, they can keep the enunciators off with backup people.
Yeah. Instructing drivers not to idle trucks, I don't believe we have that. Inflatable dock shelters, I don't know what that is. Limiting speed of forklifts in and out, we don't have that. Eliminating trash compactors, I don't think we have that.
Are there trash compactors on site now, and you're going to eliminate them? Just a nod of the head is good. Yes.
And moving the recycle bins to the inside of the building, I'm not sure. Is that in the plans? No. So it's basically those, I don't know, half dozen things on there.
What's the nature of this bulbout?
Excuse me.
This is a.
The commission is deliberating now. Public hearing is over.
Thank you.
So those are the things that we would recommend adding.
Can we also now, if you don't mind, bring up the conditions that were highlighted? I think either was, the highlighted conditions that you had issues with.
You objected, yeah.
Because everything else, we'll assume you don't have an objection to.
You really are.
Okay. I think it's pretty clear, all seven of us did not want to budge on any of these, so we're not.
What about the bulbouts being temporary?
I would like to suggest that. I don't know if anybody's going to call the question, make a motion here, but that's.
I'd like to make the motion. I'd like to make the motion that we accept, that we do not accept their conditions of approval, the applicants, with the one exception that if they want, the bulbouts can be temporary and made permanent if they prove it. And then we'll include all.
And then we'll include all the exceptions that the director announced under the noise.
Okay, just to clarify. So you're saying that the things that they take issue with, you would leave in, with the exception of making the bulb outs temporary, and the things that we just looked at at the noise mitigation slide--
I'm rejecting all those conditions.
Well, they're objecting to these conditions.
Yeah, oh, I see. I'm sorry.
And so you're saying you would reject their objection.
That's right.
Right? And we would keep those conditions in.
Except the bulb outs.
Except the bulb outs, which we would make temporary, which could be reviewed after the six-month period.
And did we also agree with Maurice's assessment that we'd break down the permit in order to not allow the easements to keep them from getting a permit? Is that agreed?
Yes.
So Art made the motion. I would second that.
John, that's, so Art Hoff--
Do we need any more specifics on those--
Do you want to, well, we'll have Charlie read it back to us in synopsis.
Okay. So to reiterate, it would be with the conditions of approval recommended by staff, plus the additional things that IKEA has set forth in that noise mitigation slide, which we have a copy of their slideshow, so we can get down what those are, that the bulb outs would be made temporary at first, and we need to be a little more specific here about when they become permanent. I would suggest after the first six-month compliance review, if we find that they are working and no one's objecting strenuously, that we then require IKEA to put them in permanently.
I agree.
I would suggest that we look into being able to do that, because there is suggestion that they're not possible with underground utilities and so forth. But I guess, would they, Maurice, would they do that research and come back to us, or would that happen during building permit?
Or they could remove them.
If this is part of the building permit anyway, right?
No, it's not.
I'm pretty certain that we could construct, we can construct the bulb outs with the utilities in place. There's a way to do it.
Okay. So we'll look at it after the six months. That's fine.
Or at that point, the commission may decide that the, that they don't want the bulb outs.
Oh, yeah, that's why we want them temporary. We're going to send John down there 100 times.
So I would suggest that we make it a condition of approval. I don't know how it's worded right now, but I would suggest that the bulb outs, temporary bulb outs with asphalt curbs be installed prior to certificate of occupancy. And then at the six, when they actually begin occupancy, after the six-month review, we'll determine whether or not the bulb outs are causing a problem. And if we find that they're great, there's no problems, then IKEA would be required to make permanent bulb outs with concrete, curb, gutter, the whole thing. And if they are a problem, then they can be removed.
Right. Accept.
Art accepts that.
Okay. And then making the building permit be a phased thing with foundation or whatever. Now, I would--
There is no foundation, but--
That's true. There is no foundation in this case. It's an existing, but it's a TI, so--
Basically, it's a TI, yeah.
Is there? Okay. Mira says there's a demolition permit.
Oh.
So they could get going on that. Yeah, okay.
Okay. So motion by Art Hoff, seconded by John Sherman. Are there any last comments? He called a vote.
Okay. Are you ready for a roll call?
There we are.
All right. With, this motion is to approve the project with the conditions as modified. Commissioner Donaldson?
No.
Commissioner Coomerly?
No.
Commissioner Hoff? Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberg?
Nay.
Vice Chair Cardoza?
Aye.
And Chair Flores?
Yes.
Four ayes, three noes. The application is approved. This decision is appealable to the city council within 15 days. That is until 4:00 PM on Friday, September 10th. That is the deadline to file an appeal with the city council. 4:00 PM, Friday, September 10th, 15 days from today. And the appeal fee is $200. It can be filed at the planning and buildings front counter in, across the way in the administration building.
Thank you all for coming. We're going to take an eight-minute break.